All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our City Commission meeting on this November 15th, this snowy day. We'll get started tonight with a moment of silence and then a pledge of allegiance, and then we'll move to roll call. So if you will join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
...of the United States of America-
...and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next, we'll have roll call.
Commissioner Moody?
Present.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Isasi?
Present.
Commissioner Ruppert?
Here.
Commissioner Lanier?
Present.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes. And commissioners, can I get a motion to excuse Commissioner O'Connor tonight?
So moved.
Support.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right. Next, before we get to the first opportunity for a public comment, I do want to let you know that we do have an interpreter here tonight. So if you need assistance with interpretation services, please let us know.
Thank you. Good evening. We're pleased to provide Spanish interpretation services this evening. This include interpretation during the meeting and for those who wants to provide public comment. Buenas noches. Estamos complacidos de proveer servicios de interpretación en español esta noche. Esto incluye interpretación durante la reunión y para aquellos que quieren proveer comentario público. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right. So, welcome. If this is your first time coming to our City Commission meeting, let me walk you just through a few things related to our agenda. So this is an official city meeting tonight with city business to be conducted. We'll be starting off the meeting with an opportunity for public comment, and the first opportunity for public comment is really specific to agenda items. So we have a full agenda that we'll be voting on tonight. So if you have something that you would like to say specific to an agenda item, I'll open that up for comments in just a moment. We do have two scheduled public hearings tonight. So we have a public hearing tonight for the Boston Square Community Hub redevelopment project located at 1534 Kalamazoo. We also have a brownfield plan amendment for the United Methodist Community House redevelopment project located at 900 Division. If you are here to speak on either of those items, I'm going to ask you just to stay put until we open up those public comments, or those public hearings, I should say. And then at the very end, we have an opportunity for public comment on any other item that you're here to speak about. So for public comment, we do have a number of meeting expectations and procedures. They're listed up here on the wall. We ask that you come to the podium right up here, that you share your name, the city that you live in, and you'll be provided up to three minutes to speak. You'll see the timer right in front of me here. And then I also want to remind everyone that we want to ensure that this is a safe place for everyone involved and for everyone who wishes to speak. So we ask you to refrain from clapping, or cheering, or booing, using profanity, vulgar language, threats, or name-calling, and we ask that you direct your comments to us and not to other individuals in the audience. So tonight is an opportunity for this elected body to hear your thoughts. So we ask that you make those directed towards us. So with that, I'll open up the first opportunity for public comment, and again, this is public comment really specific to items that we're going to be voting on tonight. So if you're here to speak on one of those items, you are welcome to come forward.
Sorry, I was just looking for the red wave. Couldn't find it. All right, Lucas, First Ward. Here again to address the minutes from the last meeting and why you should not vote to approve them until the process has been updated to include at least some input from public comments and hearings. I've taken my concerns to Mr. Hondorpe, and I've been told that you cannot meet this request. Follow-up concerning my secondary questions has been a little delayed, but I'm going to give Joel the grace of time on that because he's done a fantastic job with the heavy lift of election season, and for that, I thank him. I will, however, challenge the notion that these commission meetings cannot and should not have public feedback enshrined in the minutes because my primary example of how possible this is is the fact that the meetings of the Planning Commission include notes on all public comments in even more detail than what I've asked you to consider here. When you omit the public remarks, you miss a lot. Let's take the special meeting in the Second Ward last time. Easily a dozen people lined up to condemn your response to greedy industrial noise makers in the Second Ward, and you've apparently taken five years to deal with that and still not rendered a result, and that's way too long. You have to do better, and you were told that by those people in no uncertain terms, but it won't be recorded in the minutes. I don't know what reasons the city attorney has for justifying that delay. She made a reference to it, but there really is no excuse. Rules and regulations are pointless if they don't have teeth. If you don't have the willpower to enforce them and choose to be lax or spineless, that's a problem. And the interesting thing is how the same core issues that that lineup of older white citizens seem to have with this government overlap with what the rest of us are usually frustrated about. See, they share the same core complaint. The younger citizens, activists, and non-white folks who come here asking you to stand up on their behalf, share with them. All these people, as a common complaint, are simply tired of you lacking the guts to do what's right and what you're asked by regular people. We'll talk about that more later on, but it's time to step up and have guts. At this point, the whole city is asking for it across gaps in location, race, creed. It's time to rise up and serve. And you need to record those constant requests that you do so in your minutes. Vote against the minutes until it changes. Thank you.
All right. Others who wish to be heard, and again, this is on action items that we're voting on tonight. All right. I'm going to close that pub- Ma'am, do you want, is this, do you want to speak on an action item that we're voting on tonight? Climate?
Oh, that's a comment.
No, no, that, no, we're not voting on that. Nope, that's not an action item. So this is just on action items. So these are things that we're voting on tonight.
Committee on the whole?
Committee on the whole item? Yep, you can come speak on that.
Thank you. Good evening. Daniel Scut, longtime resident of Grand Rapids. And again, my real identity is I'm a follower of the Lord Jesus Christ.
And Mr. Scott, what item are you speaking to?
The first one, resolution approving the request from caffeine.
Okay.
The almighty Lord God says in his word, "Woe to him who gives his neighbor drink, who puts a bottle to him and makes him drunk, that you may look on his nakedness. You will be filled with disgrace rather than honor." We have too many places in the city that offer alcohol. Just take a walk in Hartside neighborhood, where I've lived and ministered for over 40 years. Now take a walk on the near west side. I know these people personally, and many of their issues homelessness, domestic violence, poverty, divorce, can all be directly connected to alcohol. So my appeal is to deny this establishment an alcohol license, and our city will be better for it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. We'll close that public comment period and move on to approval of the minutes. Commissioners, can I get a motion for approval of the minutes from November 1?
So moved.
Support.
All right. Moved and supported. Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right. Next up will take us to petitions and communications, and we have one item tonight.
Communication received from Rija urging the commission to prioritize climate justice.
All right. That's received and filed. Next up will take us to reports of city officers, and we have two items tonight.
The first one is a comptroller's report for the period of October 19, 2022 through November 1, 2022, in the amount of $31,226,898.50.
That is received and filed.
And the treasurer's report for the period of October 19, 2022 through November 1, 2022.
And that is also received and filed. All right. Next up will take us to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda are items that we voted on earlier today in one of our standing committee meetings where there was unanimous vote. So tonight with one voice vote, we'll adopt those items. Commissioners, can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
All right. Moved and supported. Any additional questions or comments? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right. Next up will take us to ordinances to be adopted, and we have one ordinance before us tonight.
That's an ordinance amending Section 1 of the Budget Ordinance 2022-13 for Fiscal Year 2023 Amendment Number 7.
All right. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Support.
All right. Moved and supported. And I'll turn to Commissioner Isasi, who is the chair of our fiscal committee today, to tell us about this item.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a number of items, colleagues, as you can see in the public in front of you. So I am going to read the subject line of each one, and then there is follow-up detail in the items. So the first is for GRPD, a Bureau of Justice Assistance Grant. It would be for an amount of $9,766.60. This is for the expenditure of compliant armored vests purchased after April 1. Number two is Economic Development Department, the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy, also known as Eagle Grant. The third item is for the Engineering Department for our Vital Streets, an allocation of state funding for $1.5 million. Number four is for our 61st District Court for Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration Grant to appropriate in the amount of $400,000. Number five is for the Water Department for the Water Career Program Grant Program. And this would be for 160, about $165,000 from the EPA to implement a water career program. Additionally, was awarded $500,000 in conjunction with the community college. Also, another Eagle Grant is requesting to recognize and appropriate revenue in the amount of $430,000. Number seven is the Engineering Services Department, the Michigan Drinking Water Revolving Fund for the Michigan Finance Authority Loans, requesting to appropriate $150,000. Number eight, Engineering Services Department, also for Vital Streets, for Eastern Avenue from 44th Street to 28th Street, $1.2 million. Number nine, Engineering Services Department. This is for the relocation of our East Side trunk sewer for an amount of $240,600. Number 10 is also for the Engineering Department, again, for Vital Streets, for our major and local streets funds alignment, $2.5 million. Number 11 is our Community Development Services Department. This is a MISHA grant to appropriate award of $500,000 to promote energy efficiency, the My Hope Program. Number 12 is the Community Development Services Department for our Mel's Trotter Ministries Personal Storage Items in the amount of $200,000, and this is the second year of that. Number 13 is our Energy Services Department for the reconstruction of Ottawa Avenue, almost $400,000. And number 14, which is the Treasurer's Department, to add one accountant position. This would not have an impact due to the city treasurer's work to reduce other expenses. And so this would come out of the operating fund for the Treasurer's Department, and there's no change to contingent balance.
Great.
So a number of, lots of number of items today, but I think it was important to read them all and share.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate that. We had a busy day. Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right. This is a roll call vote tonight.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Isasi?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruppert?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes. And commissioners, can I get a motion to give this immediate effect?
So moved.
Support.
All right. Moved and supported. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, commissioners, that will take us to our two scheduled public hearings tonight. So our first public hearing is to consider a brownfield plan amendment for the Boston Square Community Hub redevelopment project. This is located at 1534 Kalamazoo Avenue Southeast and 1435 and 1451 Fuller Avenue Southeast. So again, this public hearing was made public pursuant to state law. What we'll do tonight is we'll have Mr. Gracia, who leads our Economic Development Department, start us off. I know we have a couple of folks here from the development, and we'll turn to them next. I'll see if you have any questions, and then I'll open it up for public comment. So, Mr. Gracia?
Yes. Evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager. So tonight is this public hearing to consider this brownfield plan amendment for the Boston Square Together Community Hub project. This project is a two-story, 32,000-square-foot early childhood education center and community hub. And then the total project will also include a health and wellness clinic, a multipurpose room, a community cafe, and shared workspace. So the total overall project is estimated to be about $30 million with this first phase being approximately $10 million of total construction costs and 8.6 in hard construction cost. Now again, we're supporting this project through our local Brownfield Revolving Fund in alignment with our community partnership agreement and bringing in this first construction project on the 10-acre site to fruition. And the project itself has also committed to 45% or $3.9 million of the initial phase of construction. And also in addition to that, the developers committed 15% of the subcontractor participation for companies located in 49507. So above and beyond what we have in the inclusion plan. The engagement on this project dates back to 2019, and it was a process that has evolved and was resulted in a community partnership agreement, of which tonight we're happy to have representatives from the community partnership agreement, as well as the Early Learning Center here to speak if you would like. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to John Nippel with Amplify and for him to provide some comments and overview of the project, and you can go from there. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Gracia. Welcome, Mr. Nippel.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. Thank you for having me and hosting me this evening. We are really excited to have the first large project, the first manifestation of the Boston Square Together Plan. If you recall, back in 2019, the city entered the community partnership agreement with Boston Square Neighborhood Association, Oakdale Neighbors, and Amplify GR. And this project is one of the ones that was specifically incorporated into that, that will include the Early Learning Center. We'll have a health and wellness component with one of our large health institutions. Unfortunately, we do not have a signed letter of intent, so we can't quite make that formal announcement this evening. But we'll also have additional community spaces that include a multipurpose room, a cafe, spaces for after-school programming, and co-working spaces. And so we really believe and envision that this will be the community's front porch and living room, as envisioned as part of the Boston Square Plan, and really is a culmination of significant community input and engagement. So Jeremiah mentioned the 2019 engagement plan, but we also had over 180 people in attendance back in January, and we talked about the specifics of this project. And so just got really great feedback in terms of just the long-term needs and desires of what the community's been asking for, as some of those assets that I mentioned previously. Additionally, Jeremiah mentioned that we are also making strong commitments in terms of local hiring and construction commitments. And so, as mentioned, we're committed to achieving over a 40% local minority and women-owned as relates to the construction of the project. So in total, this is a, as Jeremiah mentioned, a $30 million project, all focused on really alleviating the social determinants of health and wellness. And so we believe, as a lot of the discussions that the council has had over the years in terms of breaking some of those cycles of disparities, this really is an explicit attempt at providing the right types of upstream investments to really overcome some of the challenges that we've faced as a community. And so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or turn it over to some of our CPA partners, or Dr. Neketje, who is here to speak specifically about the Early Learning Center component.
Great. Let me, Mr. Nippel, let me see if my colleagues have any question for you, and then we would welcome Neketje, Dr. Neketje, to come on up. Commissioners, any questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, Commissioner Moody.
Thank you, Mr. Nippel. As you know, for quite some time, you and I and Commissioner Lanier have talked numerous times about this particular project. I'm happy getting this project off the ground. One of the most important things that I think I remember sharing with you about is making sure that the community, especially those who have the skills to build, had firsthand at opportunities to help build this particular project, which was in reference to the African-American community. I still stick to those guns. Because I think it's important, if you're going to build the community, this is actually in the Third Ward as well. And one of my pet peeves, and I've said in the past, because we talked about amplifying the project up, making sure the community is engaged and involved, and to go out and search for those individuals with skills that can build. I want to know if that's being done or not.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. So I did not mention that specifically. So similar to the MCPC project, we're really envisioning building upon some of the early successes in that partnership. And so some of the partners that we've onboarded are building bridges in the Center for Community Transformation to really make some of those local youth connections as it relates to construction. And then in terms of broader engagement, that's something that we intend to continue to build upon to make even more strides efforts into achieving that, those commitments. And so we do not have numeric goals, but certainly have begun to develop communications and marketing plans. So at MCPC, we had on-the-job hiring opportunities. We had posters and signs that were intended to help support that. We did get some successful hires through that opportunity. They've been connected to both Rockford and some of the subcontractors that were working on the job.
And I had the opportunity to attend a number of the functions that they put on in the community. The community want this project, and the community is excited about this project. So I'm looking forward to seeing this project take itself off the ground and get going.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah. Mr. Nippel, can you remind us timeline?
So our goal is to start construction sometime on the, so backing up, so we've had to break the project into two phases. Our objective is to start construction on both phases at some point next year. So the first phase that will incorporate the Early Learning Center is intended to start construction early part of next year, really with a commitment to Dr. Neketje Azze, and she's holding me to that, of making sure that this thing is opened up by January of 2024. So that is the commitment for opening up the Early Learning Center.
I see some smiles back there. All right, Commissioners, any, Commissioner Isasi?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Mr. Nippel, for the presentation. See a number of your partners in the audience, so thank you all for your work and being here. And, you know, I know this isn't the first time we've talked about the project, but something that, because I wasn't back here in 2019, but I think we've kind of continued to hear this in our own work and looking at how we might reduce our energy usage across city buildings, but also asking the community to recognize what their energy usage is, trying to work towards a common goal. Could you talk a little bit about what that construction will look like? What are some facets of the building that you all are trying to take into account to make sure that this will be environmentally friendly, energy usage, because it sounds like there's going to be a lot of different usage? So could you speak to that a little bit, because I know that is a continuing topic of interest?
So one specific component that we're working on is EV charging ready, and so we're kind of working through that with- And so we're kind of working through that with consumers and some of our other partners to see if we can get those installed as part of the initial construction. We are excited to announce that we're actually pursuing well-designed certification. So it's our understanding that this may be the first certified project in Grand Rapids to achieve the certification. So it is similar to LEED in the sense that it's a kind of a volunteer certification program, well, as it implies, is specifically for health. And so as we think about environmental quality, you know, certainly indoor air quality as we, you know, kind of come out over COVID, having this wellness center as well as the early learning component, we really felt that that was a critical path that we could take to really heighten some of the best practices that relates to that. And so that's kind of one of the key ways that we're distinguishing those. And then certainly, this would be a large building and will consume a lot of energy. And so we're looking at a variety of different ways to just maximize energy efficiency. Quick tangent, we are also, not on this project, but exploring solar installation on some of the affordable housing projects that would be built next door. And so not this project specifically, but if you think about the broader context of Boston Square, those are some of the other investments that we're looking at.
Thank you, Mr. Nipple. I think it would be great to just kind of keep that information so that we can share that with other projects that might come forward, Mayor, so we can hopefully share that learning and be able to pass it on. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. All right, any final questions or comments before I open it up for anyone here who wishes to be heard? All right, so if you were here tonight to be heard on this project and this request for a Brownfield Plan Amendment?
Are we going to hear from the other parties?
Yeah, are there other partners to speak?
Reverend Hoskins is in the back. The other parties who've signed. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. I am so excited about this project. It's long overdue. My name is Dr. Neketje Eze. I am the founder and CEO of Early Learning Neighborhood Collaborative. Since 2011, ELNC have been really trying to uplift our children. And we do that by raising funds, creating high-quality early learning opportunity for our children. In 2009, I conducted a current reality research that shows that the reason why a lot of our children were going to Grand Rapids Public School not ready for kindergarten was because they didn't have access to quality early learning opportunity. When we did that, ZIP Code 49507 was the highest area that we have childcare desert. It wasn't also surprising to us that ZIP Code 49547 also had the highest case of lead. We have programs now that are helping our families to reduce lead in the house. We know that when children are exposed to lead, it really impacts their brain. The second area that we have, childcare desert, is the 49503. We're doing something about that. The 49507 have been alluding us for longest time. We have a lot of children not able to attend programming because there's no place to put it. So ELNC have been doing this. We are so excited to partner with Amplify GR and Boston Square Neighborhood Association to make sure that we have quality early learning center. Let me tell you, this program is going to be a high state-of-art program that will meet all standards. I am just tired. I am tired of our children staying in programs that doesn't meet high quality. But I'm also tired because since 2014, we are literally moving children from one center to another, one center to another, one center to another, due to one issues going on. So it's about time we create this program. This program is going to outhouse 88 children. The exciting part of this is that it's going to be mixed income, mixed funding. We are able to leverage federal funding through our Early Head Start Grant. We are also going to be able to leverage state funding through our Gray Star to, call it, Gray Star Readiness Program. But we're also blessed that we have WK Kellogg Foundation funding, because in the state of Michigan, we still don't have funding for three-year-old programs. So the way we are going to layer is that our, we have three classrooms that is going to serve children zero to three, that's federal funds. And then we're able to bring in WK Kellogg Foundation for the three-year-olds, so to pipeline. And then we move them to our two classrooms that is going to have the four-year-old program funded by the state of Michigan. So technically, any child that gets into this program in 49547 is literally pipelined to go from zero to finish preschool, four-year-old, and then go into Grand Rapids Public School. Another great thing about what we are doing in that neighborhood is that we are partnering with Western Michigan University, CEO of Grand Rapids, Grand Rapids Public School, Link, Family Future. We're able to bring in the Neighborhood Promise Grant. So the Neighborhood Promise Grant is also giving us opportunity to have more funding to support our three-year-old program. So I am really asking you guys to approve this because it's about time. But let me say something, if you don't approve it, I'm going to have 400 children come line up here and hold a sign. I know there is no sign, but we really need this program because it sends a message. You can measure a community by how they treat their children. And because we haven't had a high-quality early learning program in that southeast area, you know, our community, our parents are wondering what is going on? Have we forgotten them? So by you guys approving this, it really shows that you haven't forgotten them. And I am asking you guys, and as John was talking about, it is really delayed. We really need to get started. By February, the children, their counterpart, have already been in preschool program for four months, five months, and these children are just coming in. So the sooner we get this going, the better. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? I want to say how much-
I know, I talked very far.
No, you don't. You are great. And I want to say how much I appreciate your leadership at ELNC. And I know many of us were at the event around the Neighborhood Promise effort, and we're really excited that you're a part of that. Thanks. Any of the other partners with this project want to speak before I open it up for additional public comment?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Victor Williams. I'm the founder and president of Boston Square Neighborhood Association and a partner on Boston Square Together. I was sitting back there, and we heard Jeremiah say 15%, and my wife was saying, "That's wrong, that's wrong. You got to go up there and say something." So I just talked to Jeremiah, learned that he was correct. We were talking about the overall, so the overall Commissioner Moody commitment to African-American contractors is 30% minimum for the overall project. So she wanted to make sure that I noted that piece right there. But I would like to say that this is a project that the community is excited about, is something that we've been wanting to see in the Third Ward for a long time. Working with Amplify GR, they have made a commitment to us that there's economic opportunities for entrepreneurs in the neighborhood, opportunities for ownership. I'd like to send a shout-out to Commissioner Lanier for assisting us in solidifying some resources from Amplify GR for those entrepreneurs, you know, half a million-dollar commitment for upstart businesses in the neighborhood. So we are excited about this project, where it's going to go in the future, and we just welcome all of you to continue coming to Boston Square and help us continue to grow this thing as we do this as a community, as a partnership, CPA partnership, the VITA, right? That's how you guys say it. It's been an awesome help, and we just thank you for everything that you've given us so far, and let's continue the partnership, continue working together. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Williams. Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Pastor Ken Hoskins. Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor, and all the rest of staff. I'm excited about this project. I've been in Grand Rapids all of my life, and I've lived in the Third Ward my entire 63 years. My childhood home is up on Evergreen, up on Colorado and Adams. I currently live right off of Kalamazoo and Evergreen, so I'm right in the heart of the project. I'm a part of the CPA, the Community Partnership Agreement, one of four signers there. I'm excited to be a signer, but I also live in the area, so I'm on the Neighborhood Advisory Council. So to your point, Commissioner Moody, the community is excited. We are involved. That's a part of that community partnership agreement, and we're making sure, we put that, I think it's the first of its kind in this area, the community partnership agreement. And we made sure we put that into play because the residents want to have a voice as to what's happening in their community. We were, I was able to, and Victor and some others were able to go, I think it was pre-pandemic, down to Atlanta, and we went to Eastlake. And we, it's not a cookie cutter, but we were able to see some of the same type of projects happening there. We also went to Chicago. Some of you saw that movie, what is it, Capernaum Greens? When you had Candyman? Yeah. And that movie where, y'all saw that movie. And Candyland, Candyman, they had that, that area called Capernaum Greens. Some of you are from Chicago, so you know. Now that's been revitalized. And again, it's not a cookie cutter that we want to have in our community, but it's a similar type of process. And we put that CPA in the agreement to make sure that there's going to be some minority-owned contractors, minority-owned businesses coming into that, our community, I won't say that community, our community. So we're excited about it. We want you to be just as excited as we are and to approve it. So moving forward, we'll make sure that the community will remain involved and watch and see what happens.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Eze, Victor, and Pastor Hoskins for coming and providing your input on this project. And thank you, John, for the presentation. I think this is, this project is long time coming, and a lot of people have put in a lot of hours and time and energy and have sacrificed a lot for the existence. So I'm really happy to see that we're at this place, and I'm even more happy to see that the very first project of, you know, of scale on this property is the Early Childhood Learning Center. I really am. Because to your point, it's long overdue in 49507, Dr. Eze. And thank you, Commissioner, for, he's exactly right. I think we were tag-teaming. I was talking about ownership, and he was talking about, you know, business. And then I would talk about business, and he'd talk about ownership, and so much so that not only has Amplify changed some of how they are doing their work, but I also know that Link even modified how they were seeing ownership in the projects that they were doing. And people begin to understand that people need assets in order to thrive. And so all, you know, we can talk about a lot of rental rates and things of that nature, and that's an appropriate conversation to have. But if we're talking about how people can move forward, ownership has to be a part of, and ownership in businesses, ownership in the businesses for the investment that Amplify is making into those things. The last thing I'll say is, I think City Manager, it was you and I having a conversation when you were sharing that, as they were having their conversations at the state, that the Lytec credit, that one of the things that put you all advanced, I think, the decision for the Lytec credit for this project really was having that community partnership agreement or the VITA in place. And so as much as y'all didn't really want it, you're welcome that we were able to put that in place because it eventually helped to gain access to the funding that was needed to make the reality come for a project of this scale. So thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. All right. Thank you, Commissioners. I'll open it up if you're here tonight to be heard on this public hearing. You're welcome to come forward. Again, we ask that you share your name, the city that you live in, and you'll be given up to three minutes.
How you doing, everybody? My name is DeAndre Jones, known as D. Jones. I'm very excited about this project because we're going to our King County Commission meetings, they're usually at 8:00 AM, 8:30 AM, so it's a little bit earlier. But I've been engaged with their ARPA funds ever since they've been talking about, ever since I seen it on Commissioner Womack's page, and I've been letting the community know about the ARPA funds at King County. I've been speaking to them about the 11,000 businesses that we have that generate $250,000 in revenue, and only 70 of those businesses are run by people of color. And I've also been talking about this economics, this, this is the second worst city for economic development and for African-American people, and like you guys said, it's been a long time coming. I never knew where like city government spaces were to be able to be an advocate and things like that, but I've been coming to City Commission for four years, and I've watched a lot of projects get passed, and I watched some projects didn't get passed. But just being able to see the Boston neighborhood, being able to get their project passed and potentially get ARPA funds, it's exciting, but it's also, it's also encouraging, and it gives me hope. It gives me hope that we do have Black leaders and people on the commission and people in our community that really want to see change and work hard every single day. And so I'm just really excited to see this project because I've been involved in participatory budgeting, all of the federal government funding that our city and King County government has been getting. I've been vocal and been at every single one of those meetings, ever since they've had those meetings. To see this project potentially come to fruition, I know it's going to come to fruition, but I'm just very excited for this project. So I just wanted to give my full support, and I'm just really excited for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard on this project?
Hello, my name is Donnie, and I live in the Third Ward. My opinion about this project is, I think it's very great that we are trying to give the youth a better fighting chance. I think that's fantastic. I think it's very sinister at the fact that it comes from the hands of the people who are harming and the people who are trying to say that it's helping, but it doesn't because you only let certain investors invest in that. And I say, i.e., Link Up and other investors like Amplify GR. I appreciate you for what you're doing to invest in the community. I really do. But if we're not, if we're not taking those resources like Lanier said, if we're not providing those same, we're not providing those same resources, resources equals crime prevention. If we're not doing that, then we're not actually doing nothing. If we're not doing that for Black, Brown, and Indigenous population of the 49507, then we're not doing anything. I watched other people come up here, three people, and then including the Commissioner Lanier, talk about things like opportunities for Black, Brown, and Indigenous people, but you don't, we're fighting over 15 and 30%, right? In between 15, somebody said 15%, then somebody said 30%. You know what I mean? We're fighting for, we're fighting for 15 and 30%, but that's the most predominantly Black area, right? So why are we fighting for 15 and 30% when it should have been predominantly Black-owned? Why do we have these investors that own, that own that part of GR, but it's not actually Black-owned? Nothing's over there that's a Black-owned. You keep going on the camera and saying like, "Oh, we're doing this promoting Black Wall Street" and stuff like that, but it's specifically hand-selected individuals to own those businesses. And then what about the other businesses that are, that are all over on that side of town? What about those? Are you fixing them up? Are you gentrifying them and raising the price so people can't afford to do what you need, what they need to do? You're saying that it will open up opportunities for people, for people in the neighborhood who are, who are builders, who are architecturally sound, right? But are you going to pay them adequately? Are you going to provide them adequate resources in order to continue to go to that job, to get to the job, day in and day out? Are you? Because I don't think so. There's been countless investors and development, and developers coming to this, coming to the city just to make a cash cow. They don't care for the community. I live in the Third Ward. I'm demanding more resources than just a head jump, jump head start program for the kids. Because if we're just providing just that, which you're not providing that, they are. You're not providing that. Money is going into your pockets. I've seen you sit here and vote for more money for each and every single one of you, and what do you get? Justice for Patrick Leoya.
All right, others wish to be heard? Again, this is on the Amplify Project.
Hi, I'm Markin from Grand Rapids. I too support this project in the Boston Square area. But the question is this, who's going to get paid? Who are going to be the contractors? Because y'all can say Rockford Construction and all that stuff, but they're not Black-owned. Let's have Black-owned contractors there. Let's have Black-owned builders build that project. You're in a predominantly Black area. You're in a predominantly Black area. Can't have outsiders coming in stealing money and going back to their ritzy suburban homes with white picket fences around them. It's not good. Because if you want this project to be thriving, it has to be Black-owned contractors, Black-owned property, Black-owned entrepreneurship, Black-owned businesses. That's how it has to work. Now, I don't care what you say. We can have, you can have all this talk, all this lip service, but if there, but if there's no action, you know what's going to hurt? It's going to hurt neighborhoods, it's going to hurt the subdivision, especially it's going to hurt the kids. Because if they, if they don't see no Black pride in the buildings, in, in these projects that they're going, go under, that's a problem. A big problem. So let's just have, let's get the Black contractors there. There's the Black investors. There's plenty of them around here. You just have to book for them. Thank you.
All right, anyone else who wishes to be heard on this project?
My name, my name is Tatiana. I live in the First Ward. I just wanted to say first, I appreciate that there's no barrier, but there is a barrier, right? And that's what people keep coming up and saying that there's a barrier. When I think about this project, and I don't live in the same ward, but I just think about what if we had Black contractors doing the work? The parents of those, of, the parents of the kids that are going to go to the Early Childhood Center. It, it all is full circle and it was mentioned that the youth would come, right? And work for the contractors. And so we are taking care of kids. We're taking care of youth. We're taking care of families and it's representative of the people of the community. Like it seems like we could do a much better job as a community representing the community in, in a specific space, right? Like it, it is full circle and it's not silly, like it's not rocket science, right? The numbers, I'm a teacher, 15%, 30%, not going to cut it. Going to have to figure out a way to support in a different way. Those are not passing grades. Those are not ways that we speak about caring about our community and really investing. And I keep hearing this again and again and again and again, where I teach my students social studies and I talk about corruption. And I talk about the imbalance of power. And this is the same story. Like this is corruption, this is an imbalance of power, this is not representing the people from the community. And it's really simple. It's really simple. You hire the parents, you hire the community members who represent the community, the land is given, the land is able to be purchased by Black business owners and Black leaders. The youth are employed, the kids are educated and we care for the community. And I think that every community deserves that, but especially the Black community deserves that. That's how we take care of families. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else who wishes to be heard on this project and this application? Hi, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Gigi and I live in the 07 area and my concern is a bit different. I do think this is a great project and how Dr. Mkechi mentioned earlier that, you know, investing in children and the importance of that. My point of view is I have concern when it comes to the Early Childhood Center. My concern comes from people who have their businesses as home daycare providers in the area. What is being done to ensure that their business can still run? So even though we are investing in the children, even though we are creating more opportunities for children to, to learn and have a better future, what about those who have been doing so, who have been, who have, who have had that, that concern and have taken it upon themselves? I say this coming from, my mom has a home daycare and she, that she has been running for, for years in that area. And so being concerned that, okay, will this center affect her, her business that she has had for a while now? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. All right, others who wish to be heard on this application?
I'm hearing something here that, I mean, you know, I unfurled 25 pages a few weeks back of you ignoring ideas and slow-walking progress. So I don't expect this to really fall on anything reciprocal from your end very quickly. But what I'm hearing here is an opportunity for you right now, tonight, right now. Couple of you got nothing to lose. No offense, Kurt, you know I'm still pissed, but I'm not saying that as an insult, but a couple of you have nothing to lose by actually answering these people's concerns. You have an opportunity to do exactly what I have chided you about ever since I got here. I did not want to be at this podium since April, up your butts about dumb things. I wanted to be singing praises and supporting good projects. I think this is a good project, but I think people are tired of seeing a white dude come up here and pitch projects all the time. And then they're telling you what they want to see and they're telling you the percentages aren't enough. If there's a reason the percentage is so low, this is your opportunity to take one of those mics and explain how it got that way. Explain how bad it used to be. Explain the incrementalism at hand. None of us are, we're over incrementalism, but if that's what's going on, explain it. This is your big chance. It's better than 25 minutes of rushed BS at tiny little round tables that nobody can hear anybody at, out in your ward meetings, your little token workshop that should have been a Saturday for six hours and 45 minutes per topic. This is a great chance to do exactly what I've been begging you to do. Explain it to these people. Act like they just told you that you're not working on lead pipes because you defended yourself over that. And explain why their concerns land the way they do. Defend the good. And explain where you're going to improve on the incremental steps toward the positive. That's the opportunity I'm hearing. It's your turn. Go.
All right, others who wish to be heard on this public hearing? So if you want to come forward and share your thoughts on this application?
Hello. My name is Brendan Bilskey and I live in the Second Ward presently. I would like to speak to this idea of equity and the optics on this. It's beautiful optics. It's a great program, $30 million invested into the Third Ward and, and it truly is good. And, and it's time to, to relish this and get a taste of this agency because you owe the Third Ward and you have a problem, Grand Rapids, and that is equity. This is a structurally racist institution and to think that, a program that you're not even funding, this Head Start program, that you're going to alleviate the root causes of, of the poverty, which you're not, right? $30 million is, is a, is a very small fraction of the city budget. You rolled $21 million over from last budget. And I went to the, the summit where your master planners come in and say, you're going to hire a consultant team to actually create the next phase of Grand Rapids. And you're going to have 50 of your top people from the community that you pick create the plan for Grand Rapids. But are we going to have a Black Wall Street that's Black-owned? The DeVosses are buying all, so much up. And for you to even use Amplify GR to help fix equity, there's an implication there. Why do we need this private company that is tied to the biggest corporations creating the solution to equity? It's not going to happen. Why do we have a school system in the whole state that is drowning, but we have our leaders saying our education is so great? You dare share an article that our top school is performing well? Why is it performing well? Because you select the students that go there. And are they mostly minorities? No. You select because this is a white supremacist institution, the puppet of the DeVosses, and Amplify GR is not to be trusted. Yes, this is a great program and of course, the community members who are about to get $30 million are going to come up here and say, yes, thank you. Thank you so much. But I don't know how you sleep at night because you are not equitable. You are not equitable and you are not doing right by this city. And the person with the most power in all of this, Mark Washington, how much do you get paid? How much do you get paid? And how much profit is going into this? That's, that's something we don't all know right here, right now, right? Do we know how much these private people, largely white people, are going to make most of the money off of the backs of, of oppression right now? So that makes you all oppressors, whether you have the good intent or not. This is so much bigger than one nice investment in the Third Ward after decades of dismal, dismal abuse. Do better.
All right, others wish to be heard?
My name is Matt. I live in the Third Ward, born and raised. Like many who have come up here, I think this is a good program. You know? It's good that the Third Ward is getting more, more funding. But it comes short. As for how it comes short, I don't really have anything I can say better than my neighbors have already said. So all I'm going to do is just reiterate that you could be doing so much more. And the thing is, you know it. You know there is more funding that exists that could go to initiatives like this, but instead you give yourselves raises. You give them more money when they knew nothing but harm and brutalize the community, especially the, the Black, Brown, Indigenous and low-income members of Grand Rapids, of the Grand Rapids community. And just the sheer arrogance you exhibited when they were, when they were explaining this project. Your face is lit up, you look like kids at Christmas and you spent the next 10 minutes congratulating yourselves for their work. I, you know, maybe I'm not so sure. Sure, you know you could do better. And honestly, I'm not sure which is worse, if you know you could or if you actually think you're doing enough. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Others who wish to be heard on this application?
Hello. My name is Cindy Hicks and I've been a longtime resident in 49507. And I basically have legitimate concerns after sitting and being appointed to community development boards. And something I see repeatedly over and over and over is the assignment of these redevelopment dollars going to corporations and then the rent returns to market rate after the tax dollar, you know, deduction goes away and none of the tenants get to have their tax deduction for their rent because their landlord's getting it. One would think that I would care more about landlords because I am one, but I've been a renter way, for way far longer than I've, than I've been a landlord. And I've been a single mom and, and I've been living in poverty and I live on one income because the city takes away, you know, major wage earners.
This, this is about the brownfield redevelopment for?
Yeah, it is. And I had comments.
It's not, it's not a housing project, though.
I, I understand that, but every time, every time people get brownfield redevelopment dollars and other tax incentives, rent returns to market rate. I mean, I don't think I should have to repeat myself about that. That happens after anywhere from 10 years to 15, you know? And then we're back to the same issue, unaffordable rent. So, you know, I think that's a legitimate, legitimate point.
Okay.
So am I being cut off now?
I, I just want to make sure that you know what public hearing we have right now. Because it's not about, it's not about housing.
No. My concern was again about the brownfield redevelopment dollars. And I am looking at the agenda and I see that there is an amendment being requested. And yes, I did arrive late and I do understand that brownfield redevelopment dollars benefit landholders and not so much tenants, now after the reduction period is up. So I guess I do have intelligent things to say, but thank you.
Okay. All right, others who wish to be heard on this application for Amplify?
Good evening. I am Andrea Owens. I am a longtime resident of the Boston Square area. And whatever people feel, good, bad, I'm against it, for it. The point that I would like to make is that this area has been stagnant for decades. There has not been, with the exception of a few businesses, it's been economically stagnant. And so what I decided to do is to become involved, become a member of the advisory committee, become a member of the board for Amplify, because I wanted to find out what exactly was going to happen. What can I do to become a voice instead of the constant negativity and the constant lag in providing some opportunities for the area that I live in? I know that there's a percentage of how many folks that will be involved in the construction as far, as far as Black, Brown, Indigenous people. And that's something that can definitely be looked at and talked about more. I was a part of the partnership agreement and just feeling that the more we continue to complain and stall, the more we're losing out on opportunities for amenities that we have not had in years. And so I just wanted to speak on that and to try to bring some type of peace to it because we can all, we all have all these different thoughts and different sides, but again, at the end of the day, what can we do to make my neighborhood, Boston Square, a place where we can thrive not only economically, but for our health benefits, to have neighborhood market and things that our neighborhood doesn't have, but you see all over in other areas of town? And the way that we learn and live in that area, to just make a difference, to just make one change, to have healthcare, to have well-being and for our overall health and all those other things, that is why I'm for this project. The stalling is only going to continue to allow that neighborhood to remain stagnant. And it's time to do something to move forward and for more people to come together and talk about it and try to figure it out instead of the back and forth bickering that we've had.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. All right, others who wish to be heard on this item?
Hello, I'm Kyra. So basically I just had a couple of things to say. I hope that you consider more Black and Brown people to fix up the Black and Brown neighborhoods because that only seems right. Because I mean, you're going to put these kids into a Head Start program for a better future, but what better future are they seeing if they're not seeing that their mothers and fathers are working and that they're providing for their families and things of that nature? What Head Start are you truly giving them by just putting them into a pre-K situation, letting them play for a little bit, but not really giving any real opportunity to their homes and to their community and to the people that live there, right? Now, I just want to speak as to the, the community's been stagnant for over a decade and that's just kind of how this system works, right? They leave that, they leave it and they leave it and they leave it, right? And it's just terrible and it's going, it's spoiling, right? And then they drop a little crumbs. They drop a little crumbs and they say, hey, we're going to do this for you. Look at this amazingness. We're going to do this for you, but you guys are eating it up because they left you so stagnant for over a decade, right? So you're, you're starving, right? So when they put that flavorless porridge on you- So when they put that flavorless porridge on your plate, you're going to eat it up like you never ate before. Because guess what? They let you sit there and sit in your filth, I guess, right? Because you go over there, it's not the cleanest. Why don't they have trashcans on every corner, right? It's those kinds of things. It's very little changes that you could have did so that these people did not think that something so minimal is so grand. It's the way you guys play it and it's what people are failing to understand. It's why we continue to bigger, because we're tired of settling. We're tired of settling for the little bit. We're tired of it. What aren't y'all understanding? You've been in a community for decades. You've watched it rot while the rest prospered. And they give you a $30 million Head Start program and you're jumping for joy? Why didn't you put an adult tech center to where people could walk to and get education and bring money? I'm just so confused. I'm just so confused why everybody else is so confused on why people keep asking for more. I'm just so appalled by it. You want peace in what? In knowing what? That mainly white people will build your, your schools for your black and brown kids? That they'll be there teaching them because they probably won't be employed? And what Gigi said, how many people are you going to put out of income? Because you're putting a daycare that's ran by white folk in there? Let's be real, people.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no other comments? Mr. Gracia, Mr. Ippe, did either of you want to follow up on any of the comments made? Commissioner Repart?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, so we're going to, we're going to close this public hearing and I'll turn to my colleagues to make any comments and then we'll refer that back to committee of the whole.
Yeah, and what's customary after a public hearing is to have staff and, and the presenters to come back to answer some of the questions that were asked. And so I, you know, I'd very much like for you all to do that. I think explaining the difference between the overall project and the, this, this particular project, I think is a really good thing to explain, John. And then I think the other thing that I was hearing a little bit, it is, is probably on the makeup of the construction industry locally. And, you know, the, the number of vendors and the work that you've done to try and increase the number of contractors that you can have access to, to do, to work on the project.
Yep. Yeah, so. So the first question was regarding the phasing and just kind of the overall plan. So to recap, this will be a two-phase project. The first phase, which we hope to start in January, will include the early learning center, the after-school programming, the multipurpose room in the main lobby of the space, so kind of the main living room. And then the second phase will be more of the health and wellness. And so that's the part that we hope to start construction sometime in phase. And so part of the project is renovations. The first phase will be renovation and then the second phase will be new construction and demolition. So with all urban infill type of work, right? It's a highly complicated project. It's a very site-constrained, it has environmental contamination. The project will be accommodating a lot of deferred infrastructure maintenance as well on city rights away. And so with a lot of these urban projects, right? It's tackling a lot of, a lot of things that will have broader community benefits. And so, and so that's really kind of how the two parts will be structured. The second part, I think, pertains to, to the construction industry more broadly. And so our objective and expectation is that we're maximizing participation from women-owned, minority-owned, and local construction companies to the extent possible. And so some of the, the sectors are just straight up very difficult to identify those folks. And so I think it's more of an articulation of some of the broader challenges that we as a community have. And so, you know, notable examples are things like steel erection, right? That's going to be a very significant part of the overall construction project. There's no local company, minority-owned companies that work in that space. Other things that we've struggled with in the past are things like electrical. And so these are just a couple of the divisions that I think just off top ahead are some of the challenges that we've identified. And so, so certainly back to Commissioner Moody's original comment, I think our expectation is, is that it's twofold. One is, is that we're looking for who are the, the business ownership composition that we can further maximize those percentages beyond any commitment. And then number two is how are we maximizing the individuals in terms of the on the, on the job, labor force, the people that are actually doing that? I mean, so that's certainly work that we're, you know, committed to doing. Maybe one last comment, too. I think, so this is one project amongst, amongst a much broader project. So I think that speaks to the holistic nature of some of the comments that were made, too, right? So this has aspects of workforce training. This has aspects of early learning center. But then adjacent to it, right, are going to be a significant amount of business ownership opportunities, homeownership opportunities, affordable housing, park space, and many, many other components. And so I think while this is a singular project that we're talking about today, I think it, you know, it's a good reminder to talk about the holistic nature of the project as well. So hopefully that answers that question. Any other questions that?
It did slightly. So the 15 and 30%, I think it, I need that to be explained a little bit more.
And Jeremiah, you may have the specifics on, I don't have those at the top of my head. So we have made an, an additional commitment and that is local. So in addition to minority, women, and local enterprise, we've also made a commitment specific to companies that are specifically residing in 49507. And I believe that's where the 15% came from.
Yeah.
Yeah, and as Mr. Williams pointed out, the CPA represents, or sorry, signifies 30% of the overall. So the 10-acre, so in this particular phase of the project, the commitment is 15%. So roughly half, half of that overall 30%, overall of the 10-acre development.
Okay. Of the local minority, women-owned?
Yeah, 49507 specifically.
49507 specifically, okay.
Specifically, yes.
But if you look at the overall project, it's a little confusing because today the, this public hearing is for a small portion of the overall projects related to the wellness center, early childhood. And that's what you're talking about, but overall, it's much larger.
Overall is 30%, right?
Thank you. Thanks for clarifying that. City manager?
If, if I could, for Mr. Gracia, if he could say that and clarify. So for the total $30 million project, the initial phase is roughly $10 million. And of that initial phase, about 8.9 million, 8.6 million or so is hard construction cost. I'm trying to deal, I'm not trying to deal with percentages.
You're right, yes.
So, so we deal with just the construction costs, 8.6 million. The commitment to minority-owned businesses, women-owned businesses and micro-local businesses is roughly 3.9 million of the 8.9 million dollar construction cost. So in real dollars.
Correct.
So, so that, that's a pretty significant portion for investment in minority and local-owned businesses. And in addition to that, there is a commitment to do further development with people in the 49507 zip code. This level of local participation with equitable development is unprecedented. And to Mr. Lebert's point before, it is the representation citywide right now with the 2020 census is 18% African-American. So anything at that or above continues to help advance equity. And if we listen and if we go back, I can only think about four years ago in terms of availability, I recall, in terms of the certified MLBEs that we had, it was less than 20 or so. And not all of them were construction-oriented. And so we've worked real hard over the past four years to increase the availability of minority contractors until I think now it's almost over 80 or 90. And so even with that, that's still, given the special issue you talked about, the challenges for, for local specialized developers is challenging. But to Commissioner Moody's point, the, the project, the expectations were still high to make sure that there was delivery. And so I just wanted to, to clarify and offer that perspective.
Yeah, and city manager, I will add, it's, and thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ippe, for elaborating on that. And city manager, I want to add that we are still committed and working on increasing our micro-local LBE, our MLBEs here at the city. So we have, we recognize we've made progress, but we still have work to do. Did, did you want to share anything? I'm sorry, did you have anything else to share in the alternative? It's a commissioner report.
Pastor Hoskins also pointed out, as part of the community partnership agreement, again, this is just the context, is that in terms of total business ownership, the commitments and the objectives of the overall development are at minimum 50% minority-owned business. So again, I think it's, you know, looking at the construction ownership composition, but in context of the business ownership that we hoped, we aspire to see in Boston Square long-term as well.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Repart?
Yeah, thanks, mayor. So I'm listening to you all talk and it's hard for me, especially you, Lucas. And John, John will tell you how skeptical I was of this project from the beginning. Complete skepticism that this was going to produce what it is going to produce. And these, like the city manager said, these numbers, these percentages are, and this community benefit agreement is the first of its kind in our city. Is it perfect? No, but is it something to be celebrated? I believe it. Dr. Nketche Eze is, if you go into any ELNC preschool, it is not, they are not run by white people. And if you look around at their teachers, I ran one for five years. We had 80% teachers of color in those preschools. They maintain the highest standard of excellence in the city for early childhood education, especially for children of color. Vic Williams and Reverend Hoskins, you know, we don't, this isn't our project and I didn't hear any of us celebrating the, the accomplishments of it. You should thank those two in the back, along with Commissioner Lanier and Moody. They advocated for this community benefit agreement and, and they put the screws to John. I mean, and again, John's a white guy, but he's an executive director of a nonprofit. He's not the developer of this project. So I don't, you know, the thing that I don't understand, I don't know what to do with, is we had three dynamic black leaders get up and support this project. And it's not perfect. It is the first of its kind in the city.
Let him speak. Let him speak. Do not interrupt, do not interrupt him. I am serious. It is his turn to speak.
So it's, it's a challenging moment for me. I got, I got three more meetings up here. And again, from this, this particular project, I've got a long history with it. I've been skeptical with it from the beginning. But this is, this took an extraordinary amount of effort to get it to this point. And it's the first time. And so the next time, it won't take as much effort and we can push the percentages a little bit further. But it's, it's challenging for me to listen to some of these comments because it is, it is not perfect, but it is the best that we've done in the city to date in terms of a development project. And so I also speak, you know, the, this, affordable, affordable housing is the next phase there. Our ownership opportunities, those Lytec awards are for 30 years, not for 15. So Ms. Hicks, that, that fear, I don't believe will happen on this. And to my understanding, it's a nonprofit. It's not, there's not anybody who's on the hook making money off of this particular project. So I just got to say all that. It's, it's frustrating. I can understand, you can, you can keep being frustrated and keep pushing. Please do that. But this is, this is something that's, I have not seen in the five years I've sat up here.
All right, thank you. All right, I'm going to close that public hearing. Commissioner Esasi, and then I will move on to our next public hearing.
Thank you. Thanks for sharing the information. I appreciate that, Commissioner Lanier, about kind of bringing that back because this is, this is element of a public hearing where we're able to do that. I do also want to highlight the concern that one of the speakers brought up regarding the, the childcare facilities and how that might impact. And I don't know, Dr. Eze, if you do want to come up and, and talk a little bit about the differences and really the kind of the continuum of, of childcare, education, and also, and you're, I know you're very familiar with First Steps Kent and some of the work that they're doing to support in-home providers to grow their business and for quality standards. Is that, could we have that?
Absolutely, if you're willing, absolutely. Coming up.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the opportunity. Actually, when she was talking, I kept saying, no, 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 it will really help it. The Early Learning Center we're trying to have is going to have 88 children. 88 children spanning the ages of birth to five years old. So in that neighborhood alone, we have over 100 and some three-year-old children. We can't serve that many. We're going to serve only 32 children. ELNC was also created to, to work with the, the, so in early childhood education, not taking too much time, we have center-based and we have home-based care. Home-based care in your home, you can only have six children. If you have a group care, you can have up to 13. I don't know how many your mom have. Within ELNC, too, with our WKKF funding, we were created at every center. We work with home-based centers surrounding our center. So our center, so this new center will be, become like a lab where your mom can come for training and all those kind of things. Because we have a lot of professional development, not training like she doesn't know what to do, but you are required to have 24 hours of professional development. Also, IFF that is working with us, that did the study, is also doing what we call learning spaces. So I was hoping that when we finish, I'm going to give you a hug and I want to connect with your mom and see how we can partner. There is no way center-based programs can take all the, take care of all the children in the community. We need the family-based care. Governor Whitmer, I'm glad she won, have put so much money into early childhood education right now.
But, and direct your comments towards us.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I'm reminded of my own rules, our own rules.
So there is a lot happening in early childhood education and what we're trying to do is to balance it. And I do agree with her. For a while, the pendulum was more really paying attention to early childhood center-based, not so much with the family childcare center. But a lot is happening, having this quality program in this neighborhood, a beautiful space for our children to learn. The family-based centers are able to collaborate with us. IFF is doing a project now called Learning Spaces. And there are funds available for your mom or anybody really want to do early childhood center in their home, you can see me, I can connect with you to see how we can get you funding to improve your home, to have more children. We don't have enough quality spaces for our children. So the more, the merrier, we're trying to recruit people who are doing more family-based care. Because not everybody want their kids in a center base. But not everybody also want their kids in a home base. So we need to have enough of all these kinds so that our families can have choices. So, yeah, so it's no-brainer. We're not, our center is not going to take all the children in 49507. It's not even enough. If you ask John, I wanted at least over 100 children. We just cannot make a walk in that space without compromising quality.
Thank you. Thank you for, for adding that. All right, commissioners, any final questions or comments? You're good with me closing that public hearing and then that will be brought back to us at committee of the whole. All right, commissioners, that's going to take us to our second public hearing tonight. And this is a public hearing to consider a Brownfield Plan Amendment for the United Methodist Community House? For the, that's okay, that's okay. For the United Methodist Community House redevelopment project. This is located at 900 Division. And again, we'll have Mr. Gracia start tonight. And then I see Mr. Eric Williams with us tonight. We'll have him come up afterwards, provide some additional comments. And I don't know if you have others with you who wish to be heard. And then we will open it up for the public hearing. Mr. Gracia?
Yes, again, this is a, another Brownfield Plan Amendment support for the United Methodist Community House redevelopment project at 900 Division Avenue. Again, this project is a, proposes a four-story mixed-use building that includes an adult activity center, early childhood education center, intergenerational education center, and a healthy food market. They will also result in the creation of 46 senior housing units on two floors of the development. Those particular units will be from the 30 to 80% AMI price range. And also, this project is also participating in utilizing MBE, WB, and MLBE contractors to the amount of $3.8 million. I'd like to ask Mr. Williams to come and speak about the project as well and answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mr. Williams, welcome. I know many of us have been over and toured the facility and we're familiar with the project. So if you can provide a good overview for those who are here. project, so if you can provide a good overview for those who are here tonight.
Thank you very much. I appreciate being on this side of that table. Eric Williams and, and co-CEO of United Methodist Community House, Carla Moore is my colleague, and she was not able to be here. Marcus Ronaldo is a part of our, our team as well, and we just want to do an overview of the project, and most of you, you know, Commissioner Esasi, we got to get you over there to visit with us, you know, so we would like that. We began this journey four years ago, and, and one of the things we've learned, as Dr. Eze has mentioned a few times, there is not enough, when we look at children and the need for childcare, the need is past dire, it is, it is dangerously low. So, I would be supportive of her project, and I'm sure she would be supportive of mine, because if we could double to triple the number of children we serve, we would still be underserving the children in Grand Rapids by literally thousands of licensed and needed and train slots. The project overall is a $40 million project, and it will include a number of, a number of different components, and one of them is a child development center that will house six classrooms. These will be dedicated to infants and toddlers ages zero to two. Those are the most expensive and most difficult, you know, ages to try and provide care for. The ratio of the children to teachers higher, and just the needs are much more intense. It does cost a lot more, but there is a great need there. Kellogg funded a study with IFF not long ago, and found out in our service area, there was a need for 2,400 age zero to two slots. Only 189 slots existed. They recently updated that study, and the numbers came back even more severe. So, there is a need for, to have more child, childcare centers in our area. Secondly, Grand Rapids is the second largest city in, in the state, and we have over 50,000 folks who are over 55 live in this community. We don't have a major older adult activity center. Wyoming does. They have a 30,000 square foot center, and it is so nice, Evergreen Commons. So, we recognize a need there as well. AARP, their national office in DC, conducted a study for us, and what they determined was that 98% of the folks they polled in our service area said they would attend regularly a center of this size. And so, we have planned an older adult activity center as well. And right now, we have, you know, we have an older adult activity center currently. It is so inadequate, and, and many of you have seen that site, and it is just, our older adults deserve so much more than what we're able to offer them. And we are determined to do better by them. And, and it is sort of nice, we had an event prior to coming here, we call a family dinner, and it was cool, because we had, we had children as young as six weeks, and we have older adults over 90 years old in the same facility. So, we have this natural, organic opportunity for intergenerational engagement. And, and so, we've also, we're hosting an, an intergenerational center in collaboration with GBSU, and it will be an internship site, and a site to do studies, research, to learn about the benefits of intergenerational programming. And we've hired Intergenerations United, which is a national umbrella organization, and so they actually are conducting an assessment with us as well, as we design this out. We've hired a special architect out of Texas, Dr. Nathan Narausie, teaches at University of Texas Architectural School, and her, her specialization is designing intergenerational space. So, Dr. Narausie has helped us design this space just for IG research, IG engagement, and her handprint will take over the, will be throughout the entire, the entire child development center and older generation, older adult activity center. And finally, many of you know, we have a fresh market there as well, and this market, we are in a food desert, and, and we have actually priced our food, I mean, we, we accept all types of, all forms of payment, but we've priced our food to be comparable with Meyer and, and with Walmart. So, you know, I go there and shop for all my staples, because I'm coming out cheaper than I'm going to, you know, going to Meyer or Walmart. And the final piece that we recognize, and this actually came, Mr. Washington, as a, from your predecessor, I'm not sure if it's Connie's here tonight, Connie Bohatch, and when, when Eric DeLong was talking, we talked about this project four years ago, and both Eric and Connie said, "You got to do housing." That's nowhere in the world we're doing housing, and unfortunately, but fortunately, we also are, are designing 46 units of older adult affordable housing. That was important to this project. We believe this project will, it will create over 50 new jobs, you know, well-paying jobs. It also will help to transform the South Division corridor, we believe, and we think it's just going to make a major change. As we, as we come into the city, exit the city, we believe we're pulling downtown, further down, down Division Avenue. So, we're excited, excited about that. The, at this point, as I said, $40 million, we have successfully raised approximately $22 million toward the project, with another $8 million that we are, we are currently exploring and anticipate those $8 million will come as well. We will, we will follow with the Capitol Campaign, working with, working with the Breton Group. And so, we believe it's a, an exciting project that our community needs. We are data-driven, and so, everything that we're doing is, is driven, is determined by studies. We have looked at literally dozens of studies of older adult centers around the country, around the world. We've looked at CDCs around the world, and we think we have put together a very unique project that will become a gem in the city. We also have worked hard to, you know, we have an inclusion plan, if required, and that's been submitted and approved. That being said, we are committed to having people of color heavily involved in this project. And, and, and we held our first meeting at the Center for Transformation with, in collaboration with the Hispanic Chamber, the Chamber of Commerce, as well as Mercantile Bank. And our, our, we had over 100 folks attend that, businesses of color attend that. And one of the things we're talking about, you can be a business of color, a small business, but, you know, if we're doing a project that takes 18 months to build, it's tough to have money in your coffers to cover salaries month by month by month by month. And, and so, we are actually working with, with financial institutions to try and develop ways, if, if, if one contractor gets a contract, a signed contract, that we can get a bank to step up and say, "Well, you have a contract, we will help support you fill that financial gap." We really want to grow businesses of color. Our board is more than 60% of color, black and brown folks. Our leadership, Carla and I are both African-American leaders who are leading, leading this project, and when you look at our directors, you find a very, very diverse group of people. They, they have the saying, and I'm, I'm not going to talk too long, that you all, most of you heard this, is talking about, you know, diversity is, is being invited to the party. And then they say, you know, inclusion is being invited to dance, and I don't think that's, that's how it works. I believe diversity is being invited to the party. Equity is when you get asked to dance. Inclusion is when you help plan that party. And we believe in planning the party. So, we, as, as people of color, have taken a stand that with the contractor working with Wolverine, a part of our agreement is that we have final say on what contractors you choose. Now, that puts us in a, in a, in a jam, because if a contractor does not perform, we have to eat that. But we believe we have to begin to take those kind of, those kind of steps. Wolverine has to work closely with us in, in making that happen. So, we've been working, you know, from inception on how we can, we can, you know, I don't talk about diversity a whole lot. You know, I believe in equity, I believe in inclusion. If you're doing equity right, if you do inclusion right, diversity is going to happen, you know? And we've seen that happen over and over again in a project, that project that we're pursuing now. So, I appreciate the city coming to the table, as you've had, you have been very, very supportive, and we're grateful for that. We will continue to pursue, we will hold you accountable, and we expect that you would do the same to us. I'm going to ask Marcus, is there anything that you wanted to, wanted to share?
I'll wait for any questions.
Okay, any, Madam Mayor?
Let me turn my mic on. I don't have any questions. I've appreciated having time with you there on-site and walking the facility and, and joining you on a couple occasions there to learn more, and also happy to support the Capitol Campaign. So, Commissioners, any questions?
Madam Mayor, I do.
Commissioner Moody?
Mr. Williams is being very modest about the United Methodist Community House. This is my stomping grounds. This is where I grew up at. This is in my old neighborhood, because I lived right next door to United Methodist Community House. The United Methodist Community House, back in the early 60s and 70s, had one of the largest educational programs for the youth in the community. We did more than just play basketball. We did educational events, reading, writing, and they made sure that we had what we needed in terms of what was needed to take place in the community. We had the largest African-American senior citizen program in the city, in the urban community before any other program ever had one. We used to have senior citizens' balls. Remember that, Mr. Williams?
We still do.
We should. And I used to provide limousine services for all those balls back in the day. And that was because I grew up there, that was because it opened up a door for me. My mother graduated from United Methodist Community House after-school program from the 11th grade, getting her 12th grade education, which inspired my brother and I to stay in school. We did all kinds of stuff over there, the neighborhood, sewing, and it was a predominantly African-American community, but predominantly African-American people working in that facility.
Yes.
So, you've been very good at explaining this, but sometimes history is so important as to where we're going in the future, and I don't want to lose that.
Thank you. You know, we're 120 years old, and, and we really had to figure out how do we, how do, we needed to make some changes, how do we prepare ourselves for the next 100 years? And this project actually does that. And, and so, I appreciate, you know, you sharing that history with you, because we, we hoping that your great-great-grandkids are still hanging out there.
I married my wife out of it.
He met his wife at the center, so, yes, yeah.
Commissioner Lanier and the city manager, did you want to add something or ask a question? Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner, for coming and sharing this project with us. I, I remember when the decision was made for you to take over the helm at United Methodist, and I remember where things were, speaking of history, at that time. And I think some of us were asking, like, "Really? That's the decision you just made?" But, we are grateful to have had you at the helm and Carla both in, in the vision of this. I remember talking about this with many people, just saying, "He has a vision, Reverend Williams has a vision, and you all need to hear this vision." And, and then all of the steps, the intentionality and the steps that you've made, from acquiring property to, you know, waiting out leases, and, and going through all of the steps that you've gone through to make sure that you had the control that was necessary to reach the outcomes that you're putting in place, has been amazing to watch. So, thank you for your tenacity in, in taking something from nothing, child, because I was just like, "I don't know how this is going to happen." But, I am grateful that we're at this point, to, to see that your vision is coming to fruition, and I'm hopeful that as you go into your Capitol Campaign, that, that there will be more people to hear and want to see how they can get involved. And it's, it's one of those things where so many people have been impacted by the United Methodist Community House, that hopefully, there's an alumni list somewhere, so that we can now, you know, start reaching out to people in order to be able to help you to get to the end of the funding that's necessary to do this.
Be coming for you.
It's already done.
Right.
Yes, we, and then thank you, and I, I do believe in a thing called grace. You know, God is good, and, and we're grateful, you know, for what we've been able to, to achieve thus far. And it's all about, you know, when I look at older adults in the community, I look at our children, I look at our youth, there is so much that they need, and, and that's our focus. And if we can do right by them, we're okay. You know, we may trip and make mistakes along the way, but our heart, I believe, was in the right place.
Thank you. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Williams, for bringing this project forth, and echo all the comments that have been made earlier. I wish we had the ability to share some of the slides that you passed out on the dius that visualizes some of the contamination of the site, and hence, one of the reasons why we need this brownfield tool in this hearing to help in the remediation of, of this site, and the type of contamination that exists in the building. And, just to, the, the public can't see this, I don't know if anybody can zero in, but you, you shared a slide on page two of the state of the site, and that's one of the reasons why we have these opportunities for investors to use that, because otherwise, if it were greenfield, where it was just a site-ready development, and you just start digging up point foundation, there's a, there's an easier pathway to development. But since it is a contaminated site, there's a lot of abatement, demolition that has to occur, and that sunk costs into the project before any new development can.
Exactly. You know, there's some, some milder mediation we need to do externally, land-wise, lead, best of the basement. Marcus, anything else, please?
Excavation.
Excavation, yeah, there's some tanks underneath, so there's some work we need to do to get this land, land right. So, we appreciate your support in helping us to do that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, any other questions or comments before I open up for a public comment? All right, so if you are here to be heard on this project, again, this is a Brownfield Plan Amendment for the United Methodist Community House project. You're welcome to come forward. Again, we ask that you share your name, the city that you live in, and you'll give, be given up to three minutes to speak.
My name is Cindy Hicks, again. I live within one block of the United Methodist Community House, and my daughter is an alumni of UMCH, and I'm grateful that there was adequate daycare for her. However, I cannot say the same thing for a recent next-door neighbor that was pushed out of the neighborhood. She could not get daycare up the street, because there was not enough workers available. Livable wages are difficult to come by for childcare centers. One of my biggest concerns is I'll come into the city commission meeting to find out what's happening in my own neighborhood. That really sucks. And, yeah, and I'm 50, so I never got an invite to that, or to know what's happening. One of the biggest concerns I have, and this is legitimate, there are four senior neighborhood centers, all going to be surrounded with a candy jam and a liquor license, so I don't care how many units are going to be available, I don't see a whole lot of seniors going to really be enjoying the neighborhood, because Mr. Williams here approved and wrote a letter in support of a liquor license just less than 500 feet down the street. And I am really super disgusted by that, because it took a whole community to shut that crap down. You know, four buildings of seniors, we're talking a few hundred people, I really think that there should be, you know, any commercial establishments within 500 feet of senior centers, really should have curfews Monday through Friday when operating liquor, because I don't think seniors with PTSD, especially survivors of war, need, you know, to listen to late-night noise till midnight seven nights a week, because, you know, Mr. Williams did support a liquor license for all this kind of noise for our lovely seniors that we care so much about, because I really do care about our seniors and their quality of life. We really do deserve more of a trauma center, more so, in the candy jam location. Very concerned about the parking there, there is only 72 spots, that's all they had to make room for, for 300 people to visit. So, all these seniors are going to have a real rude awakening when they move into 900 Division. The parking there is going to be atrocious, because the Dollar Store and the brewery shares a whole 20 spaces, and that's less than a block away. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, others wish behind?
Lucas, soon to have no effective representation in the first ward. So, what you just saw was a vast difference in pitch. I can't begin to get into the branding and messaging problem you guys have as a city. And I know you find it hard to believe that a loud mouth likes to say funny and shocking things on the mic to make sure his point gets home, can effectively shift gears based on context and venue, but I do, been doing it successfully for 20 years. You got a lot to fix, because that pitch gave history. That pitch gave background. You preemptively talked about successful things involving that. You had to respond to us earlier, because we had hard questions, and I'm going to say this. And I'm going to say this, when I first walked into this meeting, first time, about a year ago, a little over, a little under a year ago, it was 20 minutes long. I was blown away. Rubber stamp, rubber stamp, rubber stamp, gone. I don't think this very valuable engagement that we've been seeing tonight on these two projects would have ever occurred without the pressure in this room. I don't think any of you were prepared to be politically courageous enough to engage in this way. I appreciate that you addressed that last one and this one in advance. I appreciate that you upped the level of dialogue. I appreciate that you did the thing I was so shocked and disappointed that you weren't regularly doing when I got here. Now, Kurt, I get it. I get how it's hard to hear criticism no matter what you do. Believe me, I get it. I've never been the boss, so I get told no on great ideas all day long. It sucks. Sounds like there's some good stuff to defend, and this project has the magic number. Somebody said 30% when talking about housing costs, but they also said 80%. So the question at hand is, we need to drill down on that. That's a big range. When's the last time you looked for a job online? Have you seen the redonkulous ways they represent salary ranges in a job listing? That sounds like some of that BS. So I'm going to need these gentlemen to come up here and explain. How many 30 percenters, 40s, 50s, 80s? Because if you build one unit at 30%, just so you can say you met the range, and the rest of them are 70 and 80, GTFO, man. Come on. So, answers. But the bottom line is, lead with the good stuff. What in the world was wrong with leading with the good stuff on the previous one, other than a lack of talent and forethought? Lead with the good stuff. Trust me, if you open a little bit better, you can get a little bit better support. But I don't think any of you would have done the job of governing that you've been doing tonight without the pressure in this room, and I'm proud to see it. Now, to you guys out here, I can't turn and face you, so I'll do it for a second, then we'll go back up here. And at home, what up? It's your job to listen and go to the other meetings and not just this one. So that's where we're at. Chicken and egg, y'all.
All right, thank you. All right, others wish to be heard on this project?
My name is Donnie, and you know where I'm from. It's sad to me that we, we have to come up here and we talk, we talk about the things, and then, and, and our criticism, or what you're perceiving to be criticism is really our, or what you're perceiving to be complaints, is really just a cry-out for help, right? It's really just a cry-out for, hey, this is happening, this is my experience and my perception from those experiences, and not just my own. It's like the community that keeps coming up here and so on and so forth, right? And it's, no, it's so fucking hard for you to, it's so hard for you to eat it, Robert, you know, it's so hard for you to listen to it. It might be hard for every single one of you to eat it or listen to it, but since it's not in a condescending manner where you can't look at, where you can't sit up on the podium and talk to us however you please, and I was talking, let him talk. It's, it's more than that. This is our lives we're talking about. This is our lives that are being affected. So it's, 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 it's not, it's no longer just a complaint. It's, it's more of or less of a demand of, hey, we're not getting these resources and we're not getting adequate, adequate funding for it. And then we're met with the response of, hey, you're complaining, and your criticism means nothing because we're hitting record stand, record-high things that are changing history. I'm glad that you pointed that out about history because one of the things that's historically prominent with Grand Rapids here is that it hand-selects the parts of history in which it wants to acknowledge. We are the worst in the nation for racial equity, right? We're the worst in the nation, but yet you still sit up here on these podiums and have the audacity to say that we're doing 15, 30%, in between 30 to 80% of affordable housing. When you use these words of affordable housing, we use these words, words of, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to do things for the community to up the jobs, right? But it doesn't, it's, it's all superficial. It's not anything that's actually going to do anything. Because affordable housing here means that you're going to be on a waiting list for six months if, if you don't make the, three times the rent, which, have you seen minimum wage over here? Nobody's making that. Nobody's making three times the rent. Nobody can pay for the affordable food that you're talking about because guess what? We pay triple the amount of that, at the convenience stores that are robbing people blind for, for snacks, not actual food. If you're uttering the words affordable housing without actually giving housing, you're not doing anything. If you're, if you're uttering the words of, of diversity, you're only being superficial to the actual problem, and you're not doing anything.
All right, others wish to be heard?
So I'm super glad for the senior activity center. I know how beneficial that is. I have an elderly grandmother that, that's pretty much her only socialization outside of being home with her grandkids and stuff like that. Totally understand that. Now, my concerns are with the 30 to 80%. So broad. You always get away with being so broad. And then also the fresh market. You said your prices are, you know, you're trying to just be just under Meyer and Walmart. You want to know how much I spent at Meyer and Walmart buying grapes, tomatoes, cucumbers, bell peppers, onions, and all of those nice fresh foods?
$10 for one.
That part, okay? I went to the store and I spent $200 on fresh produce. That's ridiculous. So no, your prices need to be undercutting Aldi, okay? They need to be undercutting the farmer's market, right? They need to be undercutting very low prices. You need to get food available to these people. Most of these people only have the bus to get to the grocery stores, right? So then they're stuck with going to these little corner convenience stores who go to save a lot, buy those products, and then turn around and sell those for three times the, the cost. So if you're going to put a fresh market in there and you're going to put elderly people there, then you're going to need to make the market that's right next door to them incredibly affordable. Because what are they living on? SSI, right? So you can't tell me that this is going to be an affordable fresh market if you are just coming up under Meyer. Meyer is gouging people. Meyer don't even got 10 for 10 no more. They're so greedy, you got 7 for 7, and you got to buy all 7, and you ain't getting one free. So I need y'all to understand that. Listen, I work full-time. I make over minimum wage, okay? I get food assistance because I make over minimum wage but still can't feed my family. You guys have been supplementing food stamps to the point where I get almost $900 in food stamps a month, right? How do I not have food right now? Because I get them on the 21st, how do I not have food right now? It needs to be way more affordable than just, just under Meyer. No, that's unacceptable, especially if you're going to put elderly people to live right there. Those are who, that's who's going to be shopping there. They're going to take their little $700 a month, pay off their rent, which is still unaffordable, and then they're going to go to your market and pay for unaffordable food. Maybe you should put in a program where you allot a, a $40 allowance to your neighbor, your elderly neighbors that are living in that complex so that they can be sure to have fresh food. Because you know some old people eat cat food because they can't even afford it. Yeah. That's crazy.
All right, thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
Mark Beck. I'd like to ask for the hearing. The Methodist Community House project is very put together, very informative, very direct. 80% AMI is puzzling to me for senior housing. I can't, I can't get on that. It's got to be lowered, lowered. So the location itself, I think it is pretty good to have it at that location where in the past was nothing but a lot of prostitution, a lot of crime, a lot of mischief going on. Projects like this and projects prior to it are changing, are changing the landscape with the vision. And it's just, and not only it should stay that way, it should thrive. And this project, it helps senior housing, education, re-education development, and stuff like that. It's just the 80% AMI, it's a bad move. It should be around 20 to 40%, quite frankly. Visit me, that's the idea, and as of now, I have to live with it. But in the future, it may have to come down. So seniors can live modestly, and I have to pay an outrageous amount of rent and don't have nothing to eat. That's a problem. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Williams, do you want to come back up and, and respond to the questions about the market and about the senior housing, the affordable housing component?
Yeah, so apologize for my voice, first of all. It's from karaoke, not COVID, but. So as, as Eric mentioned, he was encouraged to bring housing into this, which is a very challenging thing to do. And that's so Eric and Carla are the developers of this project. I've simply been brought in to facilitate, more than anything, the inclusion of housing. So we do have a co-developer on this project. We did start with a different one before I came on board, who did bring some pretty poor ideas to the project, including the number of 80% units, actually. So there are some things in flux with the housing component, and 80% might end up going down, depending on some final commitments. But as it's currently configured, almost half of the units, I think 22 out of 46, are either 30 to 40% AMI.
Can you give, for people who aren't familiar with AMI, can you give a, a range of rents?
Yeah, so the, the housing developer, Dwelling Places, our new partner, they're going to know exactly what those are.
You can speak to us.
And so I don't know off the top of my head what those 30 to 40% AMIs are, but I can, I'm pretty certain they are covered by Housing Choice vouchers.
Mayor, they're 411 to 579.
411 to 579 for those, for those units, and those are one-beds. And then the other thing I'll add is this process, we've, we've created more marketable apartments, really with the input from Eric and Carla, saying we're not just building houses, we're building homes. So the, the inclusion of housing has been very challenging. Affordable housing is highly regulated. Some of the concerns being voiced here are, are things that are set at the state level that we can advocate for, but we really can't effectively change. But we really have made a lot of effort, a lot of changes to this project to make great homes at as affordable pricing as, as we can have. But it started out as 92 units. That wasn't going to work. It is down to 46 now. And again, there are some things in flux with just reaffirming some of those voucher units. So we don't have 100% certainty on all these numbers today, but we're actively working through them with our co-developer and the Housing Authority.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Williams, do you want to speak to your market and how that works? Your fresh market?
Yeah, the, the market is, is designed, a lot of folks can't, can't get to a big box to shop, you know? And, and in the community, there are very few places to go where you can get fresh fruit, fresh vegetables. We try to, to, to provide that. One of the things we have to deal with, we are very, very small, is called economies of scale. The larger you are, the cheaper you can buy products. And the smaller you are, the more money you pay to buy products. We candidly are losing money in our store every month because of our pricing, but it's as low as we can go and still try and keep the doors open. So that it's just, it's just a matter of what we have to pay for our products. If we had, had supporters who could under, who could support us, which we, we have, we do have one vendor who has actually given us money so we can lower our prices. So we actively pursue that, and we're trying to keep our prices as low as we can be. But once again, you know, we buy products, you know, the same place that, that big boxes buy products, you know, General Mills sales Cheerios. And so we, we have to pay what General Mills charges, and, and once again, there's a middle person in there. So it is a business, and our goal is to keep prices as low as we can. Unfortunately, we cannot give product away, but we have, we have kept it as low as we can so we can serve the folks in the community, and we will continue to do that.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, any final comments, and I'm going to close this public hearing?
Hello, Brandon here. So I just want to speak a little bit to the history of affordable housing. And I will say, Mark, you sent a letter to the Kent County before they closed the land bank in 2018. It was a dismal attempt by the Kent County, which is ran by Republicans, to close the, they closed it within a week. It was unheard of. But, but what have you done since 2018? M. Live is reporting in 2021 that the Dwelling Places Land Trust is monumentally new, but these ideas are old, and the talking is old, okay? And the fact that you come to the, the Neighborhood Summit, okay, that's equity-focused, and, and you're talking about reaching out to the community still, that's the very definition of gaslighting the community. So I, I am so proud of the leaders here that are speaking up and, and claiming power, claiming what, what should not be charity but mutual aid because they're entrepreneurs and they can do it. They can design this. They don't need the intermediary of the nonprofit of Amplify GR. They just need their money, that you are the elected officials withholding from them because you support what? The, the, the landowners, right? The landlords, who are another big barrier to you solving the lead crisis. Because if you made the landlords pay for it, then we would have taken care of it by now. But they have the option to just paint over it. No, if, if you hold them accountable, guess another great way we could tax? Meyer has made a billion dollars since COVID started. Why do the city, why does Grand Rapids have to starve? Well, all the food we buy goes to Meyer, billions of dollars. Let's raise the taxes, and then we can all have a house. Boom, I did your job in 30 seconds.
Do you have a comment about United Methodist?
So the context of this is the affordable housing, which this plan does include. And I'm giving you the fuller, deeper context because I am coming up here still angry, deeply angry, when I should be able to celebrate with a community I love. Still deeply angry for the many voices here who still don't have a house, who still struggle, who, who will get the optics and the lip service and the pats on the back. They don't get that like you will. And you get your private contractors, and we can say it's a nonprofit, but there's, you just added another big Michigan Realtor to your, your commission. So all the Realtors, they're in on this. They're going to get more houses. They're going to get millions. They're going to be traveling while I'm here fighting you for the money that belongs to the community, okay? And we can celebrate this because we should, because we need wins in this city. And boy, we're about to get a whole lot more wins, so just be ready.
All right, thank you. I'm going to close that public hearing, and that will be referred back to our committee of the whole. All right, that will take us to our last opportunity for public comment. Again, this is additional public comment and other items. All right, you can come right up to the podium, share your name, the city that you live in, and you'll be given up to three minutes to speak.
Hello, everyone. My name is Chi Benedict. I'm from West Grand Neighborhood Organization. I'm here to speak about trash in the city of Grand Rapids, and I'm here standing with other representatives from neighborhood associations. We have a PowerPoint presentation for you on trash equity and the need to remove the barriers in our city that makes our current system inequitable for those who are disabled. barriers in our city that makes our current system inequitable for those who are disabled, seniors, low income, not technology savvy, or transportation deficient. We wanted to make you aware of the inequities we see with our boots on the ground, experiences of our residents, and we, as neighborhood associations, have had with our current trash system and Neighborhood Dumpster Days, or as the city likes to call it, Neighborhood Cleanups. To that end, we created this PowerPoint, which is available at www.westgrand.org/trash-equity, for anyone interested in taking a look at a companion survey about proposed long-term and short-term solutions we have come up with that could bring more equity to our city neighborhoods and the people residing in them. While our residents have equal access to city trash, it is not equitable. Those without internet access, transportation, those who are not able-bodied, do not have equal access. We need to remove the barriers. We need to, we spend over a million dollars in this city on trash enforcement issues, cleanup, and it affects more than just the Public Works Department. It touches the Police Department, code compliance, our neighbors and businesses. With the millions being spent on cleaning up our river, we also need to look at how the trash inequities in the city also impact our environment and contribute to pollution in our city. We hope you will consider the proposals and have a discussion with us on them that will lead to action. Additionally, we hope that our neighbors will also take a look at the PowerPoint and proposed solutions, take the survey, and let us know their thoughts. Thank you for your time, we appreciate the opportunity to speak with you.
Thank you. And can you do, can you do me a favor? I was just going to ask if you could share that. Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard? Hi, welcome.
Hi, good evening. My name is Natasha Chapman, and I am the newly-elected president for Martin Luther King Park Neighborhood Association, and I'm with Chai. And I just wanted to tell my story as far as trash is concerned. I have a grandmother that's in her childhood home, I mean, our childhood home, since 1971. I moved in with her three years ago, and when I moved in, I literally had to get three of the largest dumpsters that like fill my whole trap, my whole driveway, and three dumpsters to declutter her house. And it didn't declutter, it just emptied most of the stuff that was in there. And then she was through home repair services, because she's a senior, so they gave her free trash for pickup every week. And, but when you get the free trash, you get the very small trash can. And then, what she did, I did teach her how to recycle, but once I moved in, and, you know, she has a grandson that lives there, and I have a disabled uncle who live there, so I'm like the main person who has to do things, it's like, I canceled the home repair services trash can, because it was absolutely too small for our family, and I just paid for the bigger one. And, I don't know, it's just like, when they have dumpster days, my grandmother does not have, I mean, when they had one, three years ago, she was 82, I wasn't living there. She cannot take stuff to the dumpster, she don't have resources to get people to help her take to the dumpster. So everything just kind of, just kept piling up, piling up, piling up. In addition to that, you know, we have, I know we have alleys where we, people put their trash carts at, and she's always concerned, because some of our neighbors sit there in the front of her house. But she is a stickler, like I'm required to set it in the back. And the back of our house consists of going out the side door, and, because this Benjamin is a hill, so it's like a long hill to get down to the, I mean, I can do it, but there's no way, if I hadn't moved in with her, there was no way that she would be able to even take her trash out every week. And then, because she had the small trash can, and it wasn't enough, she hired Republic to come and take the trash out in the front. So now we're paying Republic, because we got the free service, so we got rid of Republic, and we got a bigger trash can, and I taught everybody how to recycle. But there are other people in our neighborhood who have some of the same issues that she has. We have people that are, that are elderly in our community, and like, I have a lady behind me, and she sits on the board, too. And when we have alley cleanup, I like get all my cousins, 15 of us, and we go clean her whole backyard up, the leaves and the stuff that people put in the alley and dump in the alley. I mean, right now in my yard, I have a tire somebody dumped in the alley, I have a mattress somebody dumped in the alley, because I, I have my cousins to go get it up, put it to the side, and I have somebody picking it up in the morning, so.
Thank you, thanks.
Good evening, I'm Eliana Bootsen, I'm the executive director at Neighbors of Bell Nap Lookout, and so I just want to keep building on this. Possibly had some idea this conversation was coming, since John mentioned in your workshop on Thursday, this was an issue we've been talking about, and we are excited to continue to this, the discussion with staff in our next meeting with the city. But I just want to give a little bit of history in terms of the neighborhoods. Actually, we've been talking about Dumpster Day for a couple of years. Dumpster Day has some serious flaws, and we also did a prioritization exercise in September, saying trash issues are somewhere where we want to put some work on together. As Chai mentioned, the city is spending so much money cleaning up on trash after it's been dumped, but we're not being proactive, and we're policing poverty, and that's a problem. So, one of the things you'll find in your packet is a long-term solution for the entire trash issue. This is the best idea we could come up with, talking about a millage. Well, lo and behold, we do actually already have a trash millage you were learning about also on Thursday, which is at 1.6 mils, has a maximum for the state of three mils, and through to a rollback with Hedley, it can be 2.74. So we, as the idea from the neighborhoods in general, suggest increasing that millage as a way to equitably distribute the cost to those homeowners and property owners who are, who are the holders of capital. As Mark pointed out, it is very common for cities to cover those trash costs. And actually, so my story is, I went on a whirlwind road trip with my mom to clean out my grandma's place. We just put stuff at the curb, it was fine, that's how their community worked, and you have a list of communities in Michigan that that is also how they cover their trash. We have some short-term solutions. This trash pickup program with home repair services, it is only for homeowners, low-income homeowners, it is not for our low-income renters. We have a really easy slam dunk, speaking of ordinances, that we don't have the teeth to enforce. We require a weekly pickup, but people don't do that in practice. I think it's accepted, it's time to change that ordinance. And that is one of the three short-term measures that Neighbors of Bell Nap Lookout has signed on to, and the other two are requiring landlords to provide that trash pickup for their renters, and making sure we get trash at all our bus stops, and all of the business corridors in the city, not just the ones that are well-funded. And back to Dumpster Day, it is not equitable, it reaches 3% of residents, approximate average across the city from the neighborhoods we have data from. We have stories of neighbors dragging a treadmill to be able to dump it. We have stories of, I have neighbors, when I came in, 20% of my neighbors didn't have cars, I had neighbors bring trash carts full of their trash to dump at Dumpster Day. We have to improve it. Thank you.
Good evening, Reginald Thomas, Grand Rapids, Seeds of Promise, here with my friends Natasha, Eliana, and Chai. We thank you for listening tonight. We believe we brought legitimate issues, and we're willing to partner in regards to the solutions. Thank you to our officials here tonight, our residents, and our law enforcement officials. Enjoy your evening.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard? Hello, Mr. Williams.
Hello, once again, Victor Williams, President of Boston Square Neighborhood Association. I support my comrades with the equity, trash equity situation. We have several alleys that, in Boston Square, that are dumped, filled with trash on a regular basis, and we do two to three trash dumpster days throughout the year, and we go through the alleys and, and clean it up. But, yeah, a definite, some solutions to those problems that we have, primarily in the alleys, but it's interesting to hear about the seniors as well, having issues with getting trash out of house, I support that as well. I also, I wanted to come forward to invite you guys out, and anyone else in the community that would like to visit us at Boston Square. We have two days that we've dedicated to coffee and community conversations, Wednesdays from 6 to 8, and Friday mornings from 8 to 10. Join us, we invite residents out to go line by line over our community partnership agreement, to hear about what's going on in Boston Square, and to walk alongside of us on this journey. It's been five years now, and we've been digging in independent, unfunded neighborhood associations, strictly out of our pockets. And we, we welcome you to come out and join us on this journey, lend your wisdom, your insight. So come out and have some great coffee, we serve quasams at Boston Square, black-owned coffee, independent coffee company right here in Grand Rapids. So come out and join us. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hello again, Lucas Leverett, First Ward. There's a saying, "If you can't come straight, you got to come crooked." Based on the election last weekend, the First Ward, Crooked wins in Grand Rapids. Kurt Repert is the latest victim of collusion between the Crooked Police Union and a hypocritical Chamber of Commerce, and a lying power elite upholding an over 100-year-old tradition of screwing regular, working folks in this town. Now we know how much a seat on this commission costs in dark, dirty money, and it's a number approaching 100 grand. I'm livid, as are about 7,600 other First Ward residents that Drew Robbins now has to find a way to build a bridge to. The buck stops with you, Drew. What are you going to do to make peace? What about yours and Josh Lunger's dishonesty? You get to start that conversation, it's on you, brother, and I hope you're watching. Now, the election results weren't all bad, though. The Second and Third Ward saw old-school politics and devious puppetry defeated in a trouncing. And a community activist got the most votes for school board. All three amendments passed in the state, including adding protection for abortion rights to our state constitution. That's right, folks, the red wave turned out to be a bit more trickle-down. Or maybe the red wave has not yet arrived, maybe it's a little late. Don't worry if that late red wave runs into a bigger problem, Republicans, because luckily you now live in a state that protected your right to choose how to handle it. We live in a state that's protected your right, and we can recommend some clinics for you. I almost was optimistic that this new reality might finally make Mr. Shut, shut up, but that's clearly not happening. Anyway, now that we've had a nationwide referendum on extremism and far-right, wackos are licking their wounds and flying their childish Brandon flags at half-staff.
Lucas, can you take, pause just a minute? Please don't comment or refer to other people in this space. Direct it to us.
Let's check that with Mr. O'Connor, if you don't mind.
Mr. Lucas, go ahead.
Now that those idiots are flagging, running their Brandon flags at half-staff, perhaps we can get to work on real governance. Since this was a record-setting midterm for turnout in Michigan, and we have the first Democratic trifecta in 40 years in this state, this, I could not be happier, but I upgraded, I upgraded governors, and I got a blue state when I came here. So leaders, now's the time, your excuses are gone. See, two weeks ago, I had a planning staffer tell me, "Good luck in Lansing with that," when I started talking about rent control. Well, Debbie Downers, looks like the luck might be changing in Lansing. So it's time for all of you to become lobbyists for us, to push Lansing to change stupid laws so you can do what the people demand of you. You don't get to pass the buck anymore. Lansing has to listen, and we're counting on you to be the mouthpiece, and then do what you can, when you can. Mayor, you're not going to like the phrasing, it's time to get shit done.
All right.
I'm not the only one that wants to help you, and we will help you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
It's pronounced Scut. Daniel Scut, from Grand Rapids. Speaking of Proposal Three, just a warning, if indeed is implemented, you're going to see a large rise in crime and violence in the state. Because God's holy word says, you take one life, He'll take another. You reap what you sow, you reap the wind, and you will, you sow the wind and you will reap the whirlwind. Here's another bloody procedure done at 320 East Fulton, where on average, there's 120 murders every month. It's called saline murder. Saline abortion, I'm replacing it with murder. Saline murders fall under the method known as installation abortion. A method where substances including saline, dioxin, potassium chloride are injected into the preborn babies, who feel the pain, as multiple studies have confirmed. Saline abortion, or murder, is also considered a surgical abortion procedure. It is performed by injecting a saline solution into the mother's uterus, directly into the amniotic sac. The baby is not only poisoned, but also chemically burned alive from the inside out. The outer layer of the skin is burned off, it will take him an hour to die. The saline solution also induces contractions, so about a day later, the mother will give birth to her dead baby, although some babies have survived. Is that equity? Is that equality? Not for the unborn, not for our fellow Grand Repidians. We hear a lot about, talk about children today, these people are children, too. Please, close down 320 East Fulton. Mr. Gordon is a murderer, threatened his wife, he's an alcoholic, carries a gun, I heard, I've seen him threaten people at 320 East Fulton with it. Grand Rapids can do better. Thank you.
Others wish to be heard?
Hi, Jose Rodriguez, I was mentioned earlier by Lucas, thank you, Lucas, for the shout-out. So, I know that you all, like me, were watching the results of the election on Tuesday night. What I wanted to highlight, excuse me, was the victory for our most vulnerable families within the Grand Rapids community. 27,106 residents of Grand Rapids overwhelmingly elected me onto the GRPS School Board. I'm not here to gloat, though I did work very hard on my campaign, and I appreciate everyone that supported me throughout. But what I would like to highlight is a few tenets of my campaign, and those are: community growth, care, compassion, radical transformation, as well as protection for LGBTQ, Black, Brown, queer, disabled, poor, students and families. What I would like to ask is that you, as city commissioners, work alongside me with these tenets in mind. While I cannot solve poverty, homelessness, police brutality, and systemic oppression on the school board, I can help shape the culture and practices of GRPS to uplift and empower students to be advocates in their communities and fight for prosperity. What you can do is fight for community-led safety initiatives, housing the unhoused instead of policing poverty and hiding them from public sight, giving BIPOC folks opportunity to thrive in Grand Rapids. For those of you that will continue your work on the board, I ask that you act with integrity and courage to serve our most, our most vulnerable citizens. And either you can walk alongside us on our journey to liberation, myself and everyone else here that's, you know, been here for months, for years, protesting the same thing over and over, or you can get out of the way. Justice for Patrick.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez, and congratulations. You're welcome. All right, others wish to be heard?
Well, they have left the building, but I had a couple more words regarding like the fresh market and whatnot. But I understand people are already so upset that these little Black Lives Matter folks get up here and take up all this time and whatnot. So, I just want to say, though, that if they are still watching this, you know, he said, "We can't give away food," right? Why do you throw it away, then? Why do people have to dumpster die for it? Or, you know, you lock your dumpsters because you're throwing away good stuff when people are out here starving? Don't tell me you can't give away stuff when you're throwing away stuff so that you can claim it under insurance. So what you can do is give these elderly folks the things that are, you know, coming up on their expiration. Because we all know what they know, expiration dates don't mean jack here. They don't. Milk can go well into two weeks, because guess what? It's pasteurized. That means nothing's going to happen unless it spoils, because your fridge is weird, and it smells bad, and you can't eat it, totally understand. But expiration dates are not nothing but shelf life. That's a time that a store can have it in there, and they can sell it. And when it starts to inch up to that expiration date, they toss it in dumpsters and write it off on their insurance, and they are then paid for that. They have no reason to say they can't give anything away when they're giving it away to these dumpsters every day. Period. I watched the Bridge Street Market was supposed to be affordable. Where? Where? I took my daughter to buy two Lunchables. I took my daughter to buy two Lunchables, um, a juice, two apples, and I think I bought myself a little coffee to get through the damn day, and guess how much I spent? $70! And that's not even joke. I wish I had the receipt. Like, come on! And also, I just wanna also make it clear, I understand that food stamps are supplemental. I do spend hundreds of dollars of my own money on food as well. So that's why I'm so appalled as to why I'm struggling. Things need to be affordable, period. Now, I wanna talk about Eli. Yeah. We should stop using dogs. This isn't slavery times. You don't use animals to attack people and then expect that animal to come out alive or okay or anything. If I was being bit by a dog, what do you think you're gonna do if you were being bit by a dog? These heroes should've went in because they consented to that job. They wanted to do that job. They labeled themselves as heroes. Eli did not know that he was going in after a criminal and that he was gonna be stabbed seven times. That is animal abuse. And then you're gonna have the nerve to charge this man with assault of a police officer or attempted murder of a police officer because he stabbed a dog that was biting him? Come on!
All right, thank you. All right, others wish be heard?
How you doing, everybody? My name is Deandre Jones. My bad, I got you. Uh, I'm gonna miss you, Joe. I'm gonna miss you, Commissioner. It's been cool to see you for the last four years with sharp suits. They always usually match the shoes. I'm gonna miss seeing that coming here. You're a very stand-up man, and I appreciate you seeing, uh, Black leadership on this commission. Um, Kurt, I'm gonna miss seeing Kurt. He's one of my commissioners in the First Ward, and, uh, he was one of the people that actually gave me hope on the commission. Oh, missing him, I was actually mad I got to attack literature because I like campaigns when people don't have to bash each other. Surprisingly, Stan Steg, our Board Chair for Kent County, uh, is a Republican, and the person he ran against, they didn't actually attack each other on their campaign, so it actually shows me that people can run campaigns without talking about each other. And that's very surprising, especially coming from the Republican Party. Um, I just wanna talk about, um, some things that people say, because I've been coming here to City Commission for four years, and Lucas said something that I wanted to say. I love white people, but I'm tired of seeing white people come here when they, when they always get the seven and eight-figure projects. Now regardless if it was Donnie Santiago, or Sidney Hicks, or either one of these people here, I wanna see everybody get an opportunity to build these projects. I've been coming here for four years. I've been to almost every economic development meeting that the city has had, whether I was invited or I seen it. I've been to those meetings. I've been into, to the Perrigo, some of our largest economic development projects in the city. I've been to those openings. I've been there. And I'm, I'm ready. I'm, I'm, like I said, I'm hungry. I'm, I'm hungry for my dreams, like, like she said. She said those Black people are there, like, yeah, we probably, probably might be a part of those projects, but we wanna be, we wanna have our own individual projects. We wanna have big properties. We got big dreams, too. We wanna have seven-figure and eight-figure projects. I didn't see probably billions of dollars project, of projects being passed since I've been here, and I haven't seen too many Black people presenting those projects. And that's very, I'm, I'm tired of that. I don't care about ethnicity. I'm just, I wanna see more people of color. I wanna see more Asian people, more Hispanic people, more Indian people, more Black people coming here with seven-figure, eight-figure projects. I'm tired, like, I'm literally tired of just coming here and seeing white people with night suits, and I know they might have a new Tesla or a Benz, but what about people of color? I wanna see people eat. I'm tired, I'm, I'm really tired of it. I've been here for four years. I've been coming here, I've been to every single economic development meeting. I can't even tell you one of my commissioners or anybody that has invited me, then I'm very invested. I know y'all, some of y'all was surprised to see me in those rooms, so I don't know why my community thinks that, just because I'm, just because I show a lot of respect and I'm not disrespectful that the commissioner, just, I just have this great past because I don't. I'm in the same boat as y'all. I got dreams and goals, there's as much of them, and I wanna chase those things. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, others wish be heard?
Before I forget, I haven't forgot, you guys still owe me six minutes. I'm teasing you. Robert Metzger, uh, I'm from, uh, 1052 Kennesaw in East Grand Rapids, Michigan. Uh, I'm here regarding my property, 312 Prospect Northeast in Grand Rapids, and also representing our neighborhood. Uh, got kicked into gear here this summer with an 18-month-old Bangladeshi girl that was six feet away from a Monte Carlo speeding down the street at between 60 and 65 miles an hour with her unsupervised about six feet away. Finally, I've had enough, so I'm back. Before you, Mr. Washington, our four petitions for Prospect, we did it the right way. Uh, my neighborhood, 300 block, was easy. We decided everyone who was gonna be affected should be involved, so we started at Fulton and went all the way up to Michigan. So there's just under 100 signatures. Uh, the first petition is the normal traffic calming petition you all should be familiar with. The second one is, uh, we were repeatedly told by Suzanne Schultz that we would not see any additional traffic, uh, because of the new traffic light at Prospect in Michigan nor the new parking structure. Uh, it's more than doubled, so we're demanding that you prohibit north-south through traffic to from-the-deck onto Prospect turns only. Uh, the third petition is in regards to the two lefts, uh, on Michigan onto College and the one straight. Uh, let somebody else talk about that in a little bit. Uh, the fourth petition is, uh, since the city has done all this, uh, willfully, fully-informed, and egregiously illegally and malfeasantly and lied about it, we're demanding that you compress the timeframe for traffic calming from 18 to 24 months down to six to eight months. Uh, I don't wanna be here tonight. I really don't. The last time I was here, it almost cost me everything because of the distraction. And the funny part and the irony is, it's the same day that I learned that this city has malfeasantly cost me 99% of everything I've ever been and ever will be. So I do not wanna be here. I have nothing but contempt for city staff at this point, and I don't think linguists have come up with a, a name or a word for how I feel about this body here tonight. But I'm not even gonna try. So, one day, one of you masters of the unaccountable will have to explain to me why I, me, my neighbors have to come here, compel you to fix a problem that you knowingly, willfully created illegally and have done nothing to mitigate. Because in any universe I've ever lived, any time zone, any dimension, those two concepts are mutually exclusive. I'm done. And don't thank me for my comments.
All right, others wish to be heard?
Tough act to follow. Hi, Paul Helen. I live in Lafayette Northeast. I'm actually here to support Rob's petitions, because I'm in that neighborhood block of four blocks there that have a lot of problems. Um, I wanna talk, just a few comments about the traffic calming, specifically parking and speeding. Regarding speeding, um, you know, the pandemic hit, and I started riding a fat tire bike at lunch every day. 320-plus rides a year. That ground-floor eye-opening experience of watching in our neighborhoods, our residential neighborhoods, the vast amount of speeding that turns into ignorance of stop signs, ignorance of pedestrians, ignorance of bikers, a lot of near misses, dead animals, injured people, this is, is too much. The speeding through our residential neighborhoods is unacceptable, and the higher speeds just contribute to rolling stops or ignoring the stop signs completely. And the speeding is consistently fast on Prospect and Lafayette. Lafayette has significant problems with the timed lights, and it's like US 131 drag strip. They try to get from one light to the next before it changes, and it doesn't work. So speeds are way in excess of what they should be. Here's some suggestions that I think might be valid to look at. Install some speed limit signs. We don't have any in most of the neighborhoods. I'd like to, at this point, I don't see any other way around fixing it, but I want all intersections to be four-way stops with a flashing red light. Then they know they have to stop. They can't speed up to make, you know, to beat the timed light, just like they have it at Lion and, and Union, where Martha's is. Works beautifully. Everyone stops, they all look, then they go. Perfect. So that would be great. Enforcing speeding by some auto cameras that would just mail you a ticket, probably end your speeding problem inside of three to six months. Now, regarding parking, it's bad. Consistently bad and inconsiderate. What happens is, each semester, we get a new crop of students that come in, they don't really know the rules, they don't understand the three-foot statute. So far this semester, we've had 36 violations where they've pretty much blocked our driveway, and we can't get out, you know, so then we're stuck. So what we want is parking stripes, okay? Like they've done on Northeast Prospect. It's working there. Parking stripes are going to, uh, help with density, because you're gonna be able to put more cars in a smaller space, because people are kind of giving guidelines on where do they park. And then it also protects our egress. Now regarding the egress, right now, these parking stripes also are working in Sagatuck and East Grand Rapids, but the egress of three feet isn't enough for a single, single lane driveway. We have to go into oncoming traffic, and we have no room for trash, recycling, yard waste. Half the time, people park there, they put your stuff up on the city strip, and then you don't get service because the people can't get to it.
Thank you. Your time's out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mark, back again. Yeah, that red wave has became a little dainty red retention pine. That's all I have to say about that. I see the man of the hour, Reverend Scott, comes out of his bi-weekly sermonet again. I know y'all are getting tired of him. But it's okay. He has his beliefs. But hey, his beliefs didn't fool the voters. I don't know the building on, I don't know about the building on Fulton. I don't, I don't know what's go, what's going on in there, what's going on there. Quite frankly, I don't care. Why don't he talk to the individual who runs it? Instead of going out, instead of going there running around scaring people to go into said building? Truth that matters is, he can't handle it. He wants that building for himself. You know it, I know it. And he can, he can come out here and say, "Oh, this abortion procedures," all he wants. But it's a choice of the, of the woman, not him. And if he doesn't like it, I could take that same super clap, and he could deal with me about it. I told you that guy is dangerous. Well, I'm done with him. He's got to go. Remove Jagger Hoover's name from the FBI building. Remove George Wass's name from the Tonne Mobile, Alabama. Justice for Patrick Leoya. Get Jared Hobbs and everybody else who has run with the law. And free Brittany Griner. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Donnie, and I live in the Third Ward. First and foremost, I mean, demanding the fact that y'all make this, these meetings more accessible to people who, to want, to want to get here. There's thousands of people who wanna get here, but they can't get here because they don't know that this is actually existing and/or they're too handicapped to, to get here, right? So this meeting's not accessible for handicapped individuals of any kind. Anyway, I am sick and tired of not being able to reimagine the environment around me. I'm sick and tired of other individuals in power places reimagining that same space and not utilizing our comments, questions, and concerns as to how to reimagine that space. What I'm talking about is programs that aren't for us, programs that are actually, are not doing anything but escalating the situation, causing more problems, AKA GRP Little D. They escalate situations, they don't solve problems. I know people want police officers. People want police officers, and there's nothing I can do about that. They're not experiencing what I'm experiencing, and I don't have to put my experience over what they want, right? But if I'm experiencing this along with other thousands of individuals from Grand Rapids, Black, Brown, Indigenous, LGBTQ+, IA community, all the, all the, all the oppressed individuals, right? If we're all experiencing this and saying reimagine the situation and giving you comments and questions and suggestions as to how to do that, and then you still come at us with, "What are we gonna do without police?" What would we do if we had other programs that could help solve crime? What would we do if we had another program where we could put money into that program? Because since 1990, the only thing that's kept up with the rate of inflation is GRP Little D. Since 1990, look around, the rate of inflation has kept, they've kept up with the rate of inflation. Has minimum wage kept up with the rate of inflation? No. Has our healthcare kept up with the rate of inflation? No. Has affordable housing kept up with the rate of inflation? No. Has we, have we as a community kept up with the rate of inflation? No. But who has? You and them. You're putting money into your pockets, and they're putting money into your pockets, AKA police unions. Y'all gotta know that. My suggestion here is, if you don't wanna get rid of police officers, then you make it damn sure, you make it positive that they don't wanna pull that trigger again. You make it a positive that they don't wanna sic a dog on somebody else again. You make damn sure that they pay insurance, just like doctors, when they incidentally hurt somebody, incidentally hurt somebody that they pay for, and the community doesn't come out of their pockets. Justice for Patrick Leoya, justice for Patrick Leoya, justice for Patrick Leoya!
My name is Matt. I live in the Third Ward. I definitely won't be saying, saying it as well, well as my comrade right, right now, but I am here to also speak on my desire to see the GRPD radically defunded and reformed at minimum. Because the things they are allowed to do with the resources they have, what you all allow them to do, are appalling. They murder and brutalize the BIPOC community of Grand Rapids, like Patrick Leoya. They incarcerate activists on charges that would otherwise never warrant an arrest. And this, and this is a blatant retaliation. And what it really is, is they're arresting us for exercising our constitutional right to nonviolent demonstration. And you allow them to send people to jails where they are not given adequate hygiene, sanitation, or menstrual products, when there are dozens of confirmed COVID cases in Kent County Correctional Facility. You all know you could make the changes that the community wants to GRPD. And every day that you do not enact legislation to radically change how they operate, everything they do is on your hands just as much as them. Justice for Patrick Leoya, justice for all stolen lives.
You heard?
Hand me on Grand Rapids. Anyway, um, I just wanna talk about Circle Back Bart. And I'm only coming down here because I've already circled back to Bart's bosses like three times. It's been going on since August. He works for the housing inspection. I had a real put on my house at the very end of last year, not that, you know, it just took the contractor that long to get there. And so he said, because of, you know, we had all these big snowstorms, he said, "Okay, I'll come back in the spring, we'll take care of all this stuff." And I got these pictures, too, I could show you. So the spring came, you know, he didn't come, he didn't come. And he come out, and then he just blew some smoke, you know? And then, um, so then he finally, in August, I think it was, he finally showed up. And then, um, so then he finally, in August, I think it was, he finally showed up to do this one part in the back. And then I saw, what about, you know, you didn't do the trim on the porch? Because it was like a metal roof there, it goes up a little bit. They took a saw and they sawed all my trim off. Well, code says, you got to have the step side and go down. And then the trim has to meet the top of the roofing to deflect rain away. Well, anyway, even Bart, okay, I've had it with Bart. You know, so I called his boss again last week, his boss said, I haven't call you. He calls me, he reads me the code, and that's exactly what it says, right? And I got these pictures. But it's not even just that. I got birds underneath that roof now. I never had birds in 32 years, but now I got birds, right? Next year, I'll probably have bats. Because it bubbled up. Well, Bart tells me, well, you got a piece of bad trim there. Well, when was the last time you knew trim was used to secure a roof? Trim is a decorative thing, you know? I mean, it was just, there's like this big bulge there, and I would have never took that roof off if he'd have just told me, well, we're going to take a saw, you know? And I can reach underneath there, and I can lift up the tiles with my finger. So you, you know, you just don't protect where the water goes down the wall. But you got to protect, you know, from water from getting up against there, going under the tiles and out onto the roof and rotting your roof out, right? So if water can get under there, my fingers can get under there, water can get under there and freeze. The tiles lift up over time, and it just makes it out. I'll have water coming through the porch roof, water out, you know, on the thing. And in the back, he took another thing, he didn't remove the rotted boards, and he just tucked this roof up there. There's this big gap. And, you know, I'm just saying, enough's enough, right? And Bart needs to deal with what Bart, because it's sort of obvious he's on the take. And, you know, I've been here 10, 15 years ago and told you how I caught him once, not this guy. And we know how American Realty and East Town Construction run rampant through the neighborhood. But I just want somebody to get with Bart.
Thank you.
And if you need pictures.
Okay, we'll follow up. We'll have Steph connect with you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Solange, and I'm also here as well with the issue that we're having down on the Prospect and Michigan Corridor. You know, it's interesting because it seems like, you know, history really doesn't have a memory. However, it just keeps repeating itself. I know for the past 15, 20 years, I've lived here all my life, very active in the community of Grand Rapids. And it seems like we have this real process where we enfold and engage and try to get things processed, where we really incorporate a unity with Grand Rapids. However, it seems like we get nothing back in return. I am very frustrated with the fact that we keep bringing up these same issues with parking, and nothing seems to be, there's no conclusion, there's no effect. You know, let's talk about the embracing. What can we do to embrace the idea of fixing this? You know, there's Facebook, there's media. Why can't we have some type of engagement where we offer like a geo-tracking, where we can get online if my community says we're having this issue with parking or that issue, that we can document that, state that online, that there's going to be some type of community event going on, that we can be notified of that, so we can make those preparations, we can contact. You guys can have extra meter readers, so on and so forth, that will go ahead and be out in that community. I also want to really embrace the idea, as we're sitting here, as a unity, as a community, of being able to enfold everybody. We are in the process of technology. We have, we're online right now. It doesn't have to be here in the meeting, it can be online. And even though you guys sit here, and I don't know what your backgrounds are, I don't know if you've got a bachelor's in engineering, I don't know if you've got a master's or not in communication. However, there's nothing getting done. This has been going on for 20 to 30 years. We've got Spectrum, we've got DeVos, we've got all these different beneficiaries that decided to go ahead and do their projects down the Michigan Mile. But has there been any communication with those of us that live or run businesses down there? And it's becoming a real impact, not just for the idea of taxation purposes, but we have children, we have, you know, the life, the benefit, the quality of life that we're expecting from the downtown area. I really would like to conclude with, you know, we've talked about this whole about engaging and unfolding and embracing and working to others' community, getting some type of response from you guys finally to really work forward and to resolve. Mr. Washington, I would like to see at what time we can conclude with a party, that we can actually move forward with this and get things started on the right foot for the new year. And you know, the thing is, is that it's not just affecting this generation, it's going to be affecting the legacies to come.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks. All right, others wish to be heard?
My name's Jim Coleman, I live on Prospect Northeast. I'm here to support the other people who have spoken about the traffic issue. I don't see that as a giant issue compared to some of the other issues, the people who have actually spoken ahead of me. But it is an issue when I'm worried about, when I have to grab my wife's arm so she doesn't walk out in front of a car. If we hear the cars flying down the street, I mean, it's unbelievable. I can't tell you how fast they're going, they're going so darn fast. We don't have parking, we have inadequate signage down at the corner of Prospect and Michigan. There's supposed to be a left, a lane that comes up Prospect, a left turn lane onto Michigan, and a right turn lane. This, it's all wore off because people don't pay attention, they just drive over it and forget it. Then I turned the corner to go to the hardware store, and I get to college in Michigan, there's a little sign here, three little signs that say, next, move over, you're going to change lanes. And it says, this lane goes left, this lane goes left, and this one goes straight. Then there's a little bit, a little further down the road, same sign. They're no bigger than this screen, they're no bigger than that, but there's three of them side by side. Then you go a little further, there's three more that say the same thing up to, next to the Curtis Laundry. I don't know how many times a week I go to the hardware store and someone decides they're in the wrong lane. Instead of turning left, they want to go straight. I have heard the horns honking while I'm doing my laundry. I look out and I see it happening every day. Something needs to be done. Make those signs a little bit bigger, make the signs on the road a little more legible so people can use them. And as far as the speed on our street, there's other parts of town that have speed bumps, they have four-way stops. Like to see some of that in our neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
My name's Tom Watson, I also live down Prospect. And like the speaker before me, this issue seems rather small compared to the other ones. But we're here. The issue, it's real. Someone's going to get hurt, someone's going to get killed. People drive way too fast down Prospect. On the other side of Prospect to Fulton, they have speed bumps. We could do that, same thing here. I just urge the commission with the signatures, although I appreciate the passion from Rob, but maybe his methodology is a little off-putting, but it is a serious issue, so I wish we could address that as soon as we could. Thank you.
Brandon Bilskey here. I'll give you the quote I've been giving you for many months now by Desmond Tutu. "In times of oppression, to stay silent is to err on the side of the oppressor." And when we look at Grand Rapids, at our skyline, it's so pretty. What do we see? DeVos Place in big, big, bold letters across our skyline. Well, we should take that down. That racist woman. I don't use the B-word, but that is definitely an itch I like to scratch. Because she sided, well with Trump, a fascist who told the white supremacist to stand back and stand by. And then what did we have? A governor race with that side and many diet racists who voted for her. So we are in crisis. And any leader who said we are good in education is laughable. I work in civic education, and it is a lack of civic decorum to have police with guns in a space of democracy. You are disgusting and ignorant. And this guy's sick over here, sneezing in a coffin with the respiratory around, people coming in here with masks. He's had to go get water. I'm a little nervous. I feel bad for this guy. He should be able to go home and have a break. But he's probably pressured and paid low income, too. Because we're all in crisis here. And you know the best way to keep cops safe is to make your streets safe and to increase trust and accountability. But how are you treating these officers when you keep the top union reps blue line? They have to stay silent. And so does our city manager, who tried a little Kurt Vandercoy. Every leader who has the gun has had to leave when they criticize our union. So I'm fighting for you, City of Grand Rapids, to be bold and say fuck the Grand Rapids Union. You know, don't interrupt my fucking speech!
Stop.
It's called freedom of speech, man!
No.
I can say fuck! And you know what? Other activists have come up here and said the explicit Supreme Court case that allows for that, okay?
Your microphone's turned off. I'm not turning it back on.
You want to be a civic leader? Sometimes the words that I need are vulgar, man.
Well, that's not appropriate for this space.
It's not appropriate for you to sit there with your white privilege and your guilt and to just do what? Not speak out when you're a social worker! And you dare tell me to be quiet, man! When I say fuck!
Okay. Your time's up.
So is yours.
Okay, thanks. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hello. I'm Craig, I live on, Craig Stuckey, live on Prospect near Fulton, same issue on the traffic. Been there since 2011. It's definitely gotten worse with this construction. Whether it was something as nefarious as Mr. Metzger suggests, or something that was just overlooked, it's definitely gotten a lot worse. Got an elementary school kid, wants to walk down the street, see her other elementary school kid, keep my dogs on a leash, but if the kid kicks the door open, the dog gets out, I'd like it to be a little safer, so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for all your hard work, Ned Andre, 3rd Ward. I'd like to lift up an idea. I've got a neighbor currently in the Boston Square neighborhood who has beautifully manicured a garden in their front lawn. They've removed the Kentucky bluegrass, they've put in Michigan native species, they're providing food for the butterflies and all of the, there's this kind of concept that's coming down the line, you should be aware of, it's called un-lawn-ing. This concept that grass is very labor-intensive, water-intensive, you're putting on pesticides, herbicides, fungicides, and all these things. And so this neighbor, who's dedicated themselves to the environment and helping, suddenly the other, another neighbor complains and says, hey, they've got weeds in their yard that are taller than 12 inches. City ordinance says that grass and weeds taller than 12 inches must be cut. The neighbor gets a citation from the city that says, hey, if you don't cut your grass, we're coming out to cut your grass. And so now this woman who takes sanctuary in her own property, her own front yard, gardening, spending time in nature, now she's mortified every time, terrified every time a city vehicle goes by with lawnmowers on the back, she thinks, here they come to cut my grass. So, love to talk a little bit about this movement that's coming nationally, that we're saying, hey, people should be able to, you know, raise Michigan native species on their front lawn. So I just want to lift that up to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Cynthia Hicks, that's my full legal name, and that's what's printed on this notice to appear. I've been talking about it ever since, I want to believe, around April, or maybe it was May, it was May, when I had, I was issued a warrant for my arrest for these charges. I really, really want you guys to know that, excuse me, my medical doctor received similar paperwork, and that's very alarming. She's part of the LGBTQ community. And she said, you know, Cindy, I said, I was so stressed out to get criminal charges, six charges of tax evasion, because I felt like I was being retaliated against because I spoke up against the, you know, death of Patrick Leoya, who is, you know, a friend of my tenants. And I just feel like my life has been hugely impacted by police violence, and it continues to be all the time. And, you know, I have spent years of my life giving it back to the city, sitting on boards and committees, going over RFPs for funding, and I took time away from my child. I did not get paid for that time. And I used to sit and push my daughter in a swing with my foot when she was only like two years old. I brought my kid to board meetings. I invested my time and my life because I really believed in living in a better community that served all the residents that lived around me. And I think it's a gross, indecent, unjust thing to do, to ask any resident to keep receipts from 10 years ago for their income taxes, and if they fail to keep these receipts, that they will be charged with criminal, criminal charges. Criminal, okay? I think every resident in this city needs to know that you can go to jail if you don't keep your receipts from 2010, 11, 12, 13, or 14. Just for the record, I paid 2015 to current. You know, but the federal government has restrictions, and I just want to quickly say, I was given an immigration attorney for my court-appointed attorney, not a business attorney, but I guess I'm expected to shell out money to defend myself. It's really just gross. And, yeah, not to mention the video cameras that are in my face by my neighbor who has made death threats against me. The police came to my house this week and said they have a right to film me without a warrant.
All right, we're going to close public comment period. I'm going to turn to my colleagues, and I'll start down here with Commissioner Esasi.
Thanks, Mayor. Appreciate people coming out, have a lot of thoughts. It's been a long evening and a long night, and so I'm just going to wish everyone get safe going home. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Repard.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Thanks, everybody, for coming out. And I just want to give my thanks to Mr. Hondor for an excellent election, and thank the Grand Rapids voters. 52% turnout for our city, which is good for a midterm election. But I heard no issues with the day, including a lot of great reports of things running very smoothly, given all the changes. So thank you, Mr. Hondor.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner Moody?
No comment, ma'am.
All right, City Clerk, anything to add?
Just real quickly, yes. Thank you to everybody in the community who went out and voted for all of our wonderful election workers, some people that had to step up and become chairman and do other things outside their comfort zones, for those that stayed late at the AV County Board, I'm very appreciative of that. I'll do a brief wrap-up at the next committee of the whole, talk about the numbers, because the county is still doing their canvassing. So everything that you've seen online are unofficial results, there are things that, little changes that can be done during that canvas. So hopefully we'll have a better understanding at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Thanks.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank Commissioner Repard, Commissioner Leneer, and Commissioner Jones for their service during the time that I've been here, and wish them well. I know they'll continue to serve our community well in other ways. And I also want to congratulate the commissioners-elect that have been elected and look forward to working with them and continuing to do good work in our city. I do want to also thank the staff for the work that they've done, both in preparation of this meeting today, our retreat, that workshop that we had last weekend, and concluding all the community lineup meetings. We heard some fantastic projects today from Boston Square and United Methodist Church House, and I really appreciate them. them bringing those projects forward and the commission and staff working with them to make, make those viable projects. I've heard the complaints about speeding. I'm hoping, I don't know if our mobile GR director is here, but I see a police chief is here to have also heard those concerns. And I have a copy of the petition and we'll make sure we pass it on. Matter of fact, there was a briefing today of public safety about traffic calming and traffic safety. So your comments today were, were very, very timely. And lastly, on the critical incident, the stabbing of the GRPD canine, just for some context, while I can't go into all the details of the matter, I, it has been publicly noted that that was a very violent suspect that was involved, that had fired a weapon, that had also been part of some very violent acts, assault. And so the police canine Eli was used in a less lethal manner. And suspect was apprehended and it's unfortunate that the dog was, was, received injury as well. And I don't know the latest status, but I do know that the dog did have emergency surgery and I can't see the police chief, is he, not even is doing, doing better, right, doing better. So I just want to give that context. And, you know, just for the, the point of empathy, the, the officers on the scene were also prepared to respond and are trained to do so, but we, what I, what, what, what I think is very concerning is that we've asked for de-escalation of police response. And this was a way of de-escalating and minimizing lethal force when a citizen was using shotgun. So I wish the, the outcome was different, but it could have been a whole lot worse. So want to thank those officers for responding in the way they did and in that manner.
Yeah, thanks, city manager. With that, we're adjourned.